So I'll say, yeah, welcome to the joint meeting with the city of Bend and Deschutes County Commissioners. We're hosting this on the county's video system. That's why I'm starting off here. So Ms. Mayor, you want to kick off the meeting for yourself?
Yes, um, welcome. Oh, um, gather, here we are. It's September. Oh my gosh, this month has gone by way too fast and it's only one day. It's the second in September. Um, and um, please, so pleased to meeting um, with you county commissioners. Thank you so much for clearing your decks. And city councilors as well. Um, this has been a long time coming feels like and um, wish we could go back a couple months and we could probably be meeting in person. Um, and I'm really looking forward to our conversations today. I mean, I know we have a really full agenda.
Great. Well, uh, so uh, as I say, I'll call this to order and we'll do a pledge of allegiance and a land acknowledgement today is my understanding. So I'm going to be uh, leading the pledge. So we are on video, so I'm not going to stand up and show people uh, my midsection, but here's a flag and the uh, state flag also. So please join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the flag, United States of America, to the republic which it stands.
One nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. So big delays there. So uh, but thank you very much for joining.
Thank you. And I'll read um, the land acknowledgement that we also present at the beginning of every city council meeting together with a pledge of allegiance. We would like to thank the Confederated Tribes of Warm Springs for offering this land acknowledgement for us to read during our meetings. We work together with them to present this to you today. We encourage everyone watching to learn about the indigenous peoples whose homelands we occupy and to explore the additional resources and actions in the document attached to our city agenda. I'm not sure it's attached to this agenda today. This land acknowledgement presented was done together with the Confederated Tribes of Warm Springs leaders. Guess I outlived too soon on this. Um, we would like to acknowledge that the beautiful land known as Bend, Oregon, north to the Columbia River is the original homelands of the Confederated Tribes of Warm Springs. The Confederated Tribes ceded this land in the tree of eighteen fifty-five while retaining regular and customary hunting, fishing, and gathering rights. The Warm Springs, Wasco, and Northern Paiute people inhabited this area in certain seasonal times that clearly established their presence. It's also important to note that the Clemeth Trail ran north through this region to the great Salilo trading grounds. This trade route expanded the impact of commerce between tribal nations. We acknowledge and thank the original stewards of this land. It's our hope that guests continue to honor and care for this land. Thank you.
We're working through our agenda. Uh, yeah, I guess, yeah, go ahead and Sally. If you want to unmute.
Sally, you're on mute. Thank you. Our agenda is divided into three sections today. We're going to start with housing and homelessness updates. That's going to take about twenty minutes. Then we're going to move into housing and homelessness strategies. We have eighty minutes. Almost an hour and a half set aside for that. And then we're going to conclude with other topics. There are always lots of those. We have twenty minutes set aside for that. Um, I'm going to do my best to follow, keep us on track today. So if I ask you to tighten your comments or conclude your comments, um, thank you in advance. Um, so we are going to begin um, with Lynn McConnell talking about upcoming projects and programs. And city manager King, if there's anything you would like to also add at this moment, oh. Okay.
Oh, good. I'll turn it right over to Lynn.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone. Uh, commissioners and councilors, it's so great to see y'all together and I'm just thrilled to be able to kick off uh, the substance of this meeting because I think that we are in a really fantastic place in terms of partnership and working together to bring solutions to our community. So really thrilled um, to be part of this. So I'm going to share my screen. And hopefully y'all can see that. Looking for.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Um, so wanted to start the discussion by talking about House Bill forty seventy-nine. And um, this was passed in twenty sixteen, passed the legislature as what we're calling a historical compromise to determine if land supply is the barrier to development of affordable housing in Oregon. Um, it was really envisioned as a streamlined UGB expansion, but of course, there's no such thing as a truly streamlined land use process in Oregon. Um, and so it is quite a process as well. Um, so wanted to show you, this is the site that was chosen um, through a variety of steps. Highway twenty borders it to the north and Bear Creek to the south. It's thirty-five acres. And wanted to give you a little bit of information. You could see Twenty-seventh Avenue is kind of off to the left to the west of the parcel by about a half mile. Um, with fixed route transit, as you know, um, St. Charles is right around the corner off the map, as is um, some major shopping centers, et cetera. So pretty close to a lot of things considering it's at the edge of town. Here's a brief overview of what is planned. Um, little hard to see this, but more or less, um, three hundred and forty-five units aiming for middle income range for the majority of those, so that that will be affordable to a pretty wide swath of the population. And out of that, about a hundred and eight rentals will be of, excuse me, affordable to those making eighty percent of area median income and under, and thirty ownership units for thirty, for eighty percent area median income and under. On this chart, you could see that different colors represent different housing types. Some are cottages, some are multifamily, some are single family. We've got some eightplexes and duplexes and all sorts of good stuff in there. So it should be a really fun mix of units. We are now working with Hayden Homes on this pilot. And so last time I visited this commission to talk about this pilot um, was when the initial developer, PacWest Construction, was part of it. PacWest shortly after selection, site selection chose to sell the parcel. And so Hayden is under contracts and has been doing due diligence on it. Um, and that's part of why it's taking so long to to leave this process through is because of that sale. Oops, sorry. So let me go back. Next steps are, um, the council last night approved a revised resolution support that we will send along with a revised concept plan, which is part of what you're looking at right now, to DLCD staff for reapproval. Upon receiving that approval, planning begins in earnest. And this will be in front of you, hopefully within a year, for UGB annexation approval. Um, and at that time, it's also going through a more traditional process of master planning, um, and all of the public engagement. So wanted to give you all a heads up that this is coming and hopefully um, answer any questions that you may have. Um, I'm happy to pause here for a sec or just launch right into the next uh, mayor and uh, chair as you see fit.
Uh, so a quick question. This is Commissioner DeBonne. So this is House Bill four zero seven nine, adding up to fifty acres as a one-time uh, UGB uh, opportunity. Ben qualified for it. And then a couple of years ago, it didn't, it may, may have not have happened, but now it's full speed ahead. Is that kind of the big picture?
Yes, you've got it. Yeah. So we had been doing a lot of planning. There was a little glitch with the sale. Um, and I think uh, Hayden was really waiting until council's reapproval last night before they really started investing and sort of moving things forward quickly. So that's where we are. We've gotten that approval. Um, DLCD has let us know that they can turn around an approval, assuming that they choose to reapprove us, um, which we don't foresee any issues with, in a couple of weeks. So we're very hopeful that this is really picking up steam and you're going to start seeing a lot of movement, a lot of public process, um, and a lot of sort of community discussion from this point forward.
Great. Thank you.
Hey, Lynn, if I could jump in, this is Tom Anderson. I, I think when um, this land uh, came up the first time after the passage, the county was asked to um, submit either a letter of support or some kind of endorsement on the project, which we were happy to do. I'm not sure if that's still valid for the second go-around or if you need us to do that again for um, try number two, but uh, if so, we'd be uh, happy to do that as well.
Tom, thank you. Um, I really appreciate that. At this point, I don't think that that's necessary. It sounds like it's just going to be an administrative review at DLCD. The pilot site remains, and that's what they said was most important. The city, um, the con, and the site and the concept plan is really the reason for the change. We made some slight tweaks to unit counts, et cetera, which is why we have to go back through this process. But at this point, no need for additional resolutions or letters of support. But thank you.
Thank you. Um, councillor Campbell, and as you're unmuting, I'm just going to remind everyone, um, it's easier for me to see you when you put your hand up. It's quite a group, so um, just reminding you that that, we'll just make sure you're seen. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, thank you, Lynn. Lynn, did Redmond also get selected for this program for fifty acres?
Yeah, great question. So initially, the state was tasked with, with choosing one city with twenty-five thousand people and up uh, population to, to select. And so we were in competition. Uh, many of you may remember the headlines, you know, Ben versus Redmond and all of that. It was actually very collaborative. And we really supported one another throughout the process. Um, however, that was the rule. Uh, the good news is, right after we were selected, there was a new bill brought, and I can't remember the number of the bill, that allowed for Redmond to have their own pilot. What's really exciting about this to me is that the two methods that the cities are using to, to move these parcels through are very different. Um, so as this commission knows, uh, the parcel that Redmond is using, um, was formerly Deschutes County parcel and is now owned by the city of Redmond. Um, and that's a pretty critical difference in how these things uh, go about. So I think personally that this is going to be a tremendous opportunity to learn from one another, learn from the pilots, and try to figure out what's working, what's not working, and how can we continue to improve the systems we work within going forward.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. I think with that, I'm going to move us on to the next item. Um, I'm going to introduce Kristy Ballinger from the county and talk about some county-owned property. And I'm going to have Kristy and Lynn talk about another project.
Thank you, Mayor. For the record, Kristy Ballinger, Deschutes County Property Management. So I've been asked to talk a little bit about how the county has worked to leverage county-owned property uh, for some affordable housing projects. So several months ago, the county started looking through its portfolio to try to identify feasible properties um, that may work for affordable housing. And during that time, uh, David Brant with Housing Works reached out to the county and uh, basically expressed his interest on the county-owned property on the corner of Twenty-seventh and Connors. And um, and as everybody likely knows, that's adjacent to or nearby, um, the Tuscan and Connors uh, property that Housing Works is currently developing, which will result in forty-seven uh, units to uh, support seniors. So about last summer, um, Housing Works also acquired the uh, middle parcel there, if you could see on the map that Lynn displayed. Um, and so basically, they're asked to the county, would we have any interest in potentially um, providing our parcel, one point one-four acres, to combine with the middle parcel there, which would ultimately provide um, around a hundred of, hundred units. And so after um, you know, we invited David in to come do a presentation, um, and talk with the board, and after deliberation, our board concurred and and uh, we are in the process of moving forward um, uh, with, with the ultimate goal of conveying that property to Housing Works. So um, the outline that, um, excuse me, the timeline that David provided, David Brant with Housing Works provided. Um, we are currently working through the purchase and sale agreement. We, we just pretty much wrapped that up. Um, there's a few logistics um, that we need to work through, um, that should be done um, early to mid-September. So moving forward through um, Housing Works' um, process of getting additional loans and things like that, um, design. Um, we would be looking at an occupancy date for um, you know, again, roughly a hundred units that fully has to be bedded, but somewhere between uh, maybe about February to early summer of twenty twenty-four. So it's a really exciting project. Um, I know um, the county is very committed. Um, and I know Housing Works is very, very excited about this, to, to have this opportunity. So with that, I'm happy to try to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Very exciting trust, um, project. Commissioners and councilors, um, I see one hand up. Councillor Schenkelberg.
Thanks, Mayor. Um, just for some clarification, Kristy, Housing Works is getting the funds to purchase this from the county through the Affordable Housing Fund, right, Lynn?
I can jump in. Yeah, if that's okay, I'll jump in. So um, the city is funding this transaction at approximately nine hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. Um, that is our investment in this.
And so like with kind of the money breakdown going from us purchasing, well, Housing Works purchasing through city funds to get this piece of land, I know that the county commissioners are also asking the city of Bend for some money towards the stabilization center. And I'm wondering if there is some ways to kind of shift as we are giving those funds for the property to the county, if some of those funds that they're receiving for that piece of land could go towards supporting the stabilization center. Yes, it's more of a general question. That's not a.
I can talk to that a little bit. And uh, so, and, and let's have a discussion if you'd like. So that's a, um, I think of that as an asset property of the people of Deschutes County. It's a piece of land that the people own, that we represent for Deschutes County. It's non-reoccurring revenue if we sell it, or we want to use, have the highest and best use for that parcel also. So uh, stabilization center is, is a commitment. It's a long-term. It's going to be a reoccurring uh, financial ask. And uh, the Deschutes County is going to be investing in like the courthouse and some other uh, facilities, the health department. So as I say, I'm, I'm generally holding on to the concept that that's a, just an asset property of the county for the people that, and if we, if we don't use those dollars for uh, other buildings, when the next time we have to do a big project, we may have to borrow money. So it's just, that's how I see that as, as uh, it's an asset property.
Yeah, that totally makes sense, just in kind of looking at the numbers and kind of what we're trying to kind of navigate and discuss here, if some of those monies could go towards the stabilization center from the ask that we got in the letter.
We'll, we'll continue to work through that, I think. Thank you for that suggestion. Um, Chair DeBonne, I, you had your hand up.
Yeah.
Earlier.
So uh, I would like to take a moment. I mean, I'd almost proposed, we have an icebreaker of some sort. I mean, I'm even thinking like that because I mean, let's acknowledge, we have not even met as a joint body this year. We have new people on the county and the commission, uh, the council and the commission. And we're diving into these issues of the day, and I haven't even been able to be in the same room with a few of you. So uh, you know, however we want to take that, we could take a few moments and just have fun, even just saying hi to each other if we want to. Uh, and just acknowledging that we haven't even met in a joint session yet this year. And you know, as I say, Commissioner Chang has joined us this year and we have a couple of meetings a week and we're all working together, but I haven't even met Ms. Schenkelberg. We talked, we spoke on the phone a couple of days ago, but you know, we haven't even met.
That's a, that's a, you can call me Rita.
Rita.
Yeah.
All right. Um, shall we go around the, yeah, why don't we take a moment and go around the circle? Do you want to start? Chair DeBonne, and then we'll go through the commission and then do the council?
Uh, well, as I say, Commissioner Chang, Commissioner Dare, go ahead and say hi. Just a little introduction, please.
Hi, it's Commissioner Patty Adair, and we actually, the three of us, were out at a, a twenty-nine greenhouse, uh, major drug event today, uh, with law enforcement from all over the place. So um, I'm sure it'll be hitting the news later, but it um, it was unbelievable where we were, and um, I think my clothes will all have to be washed tonight. So anyway, thank you for um, having this meeting. I'm sorry it's taken so long. Oh my gosh, it's September second. Sally, it's crazy. Why, why haven't we done this before? We surely should have.
Here we are. That's what I'll say.
Hey, everyone. Commissioner Phil Chang, and I am delighted that we're having uh, this joint meeting today. There are so many issues that connect the city of Bend and Deschutes County, and um, this is the appropriate place for us to um, put those on the radar screen, uh, address, you know, questions that come up and uh, kind of chart a course to move forward together. So thanks for having us today.
Great. And I'll say, so uh, I'm honored to be a commissioner here in Deschutes County. Uh, you know, we are meeting uh, via video because of COVID, serious business here. Uh, you know, I want to thank all the medical workers and people dealing with COVID. There's policy decisions around that right now. We, you know, we're getting headlines when we, when we talk about or we don't talk about stuff right now. So let's all work together and support each other during these critical times. Uh, and you know, the topics we're talking about today with housing and homelessness is uh, serious business also. But uh, yeah, nice, nice to see everybody today at least.
Agreed. Um, I'm, I'm just going to, I put together a random list, so I will start with councillor Campbell and then Goodman Campbell and then Broadman, Schenkelberg, Kiebler, Perkins, and Muswell. Councillor Campbell.
Hi, everybody. I'm so happy to be here. Um, it's my second term on council. So I think I have had the opportunity to actually be in the same room with all of you. So, so happy to see you, so happy we can work together on these things that absolutely affect all of the folks that we got elected to try and help, frankly. So thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Goodman Campbell.
Hi, everyone. Um, I'm Jenna Goodman Campbell, and I think I have had the opportunity to um, meet in the same room with all of you, but not obviously all together like this as a group. So um, as you all can see, I'm, I'm uh, sitting outside today, um, enjoying sunshine, but um, wish we could all um, be, you know, together in the same room, and hopefully that will happen soon. So um, yeah. Good to be here virtually, virtually with you all.
Thank you. Councillor Rodman.
Hi, everybody. Um, I think I've, I've had the luxury of, of meeting with everybody quite a bit, so it's good to see everybody together and glad we can do this. I think what precipitated this was our proposal on June second regarding um, funding matching, which I know the county's taken up. Um, but it's, you know, it's appropriate that it's ninety days to the day. Um, so we know what the pace of government is, and um, I think we all feel the urgency, and I'm glad we are here. Um, I, I certainly feel the urgency to um, to work together and I'm glad we're doing that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Schenkelberg. Rita.
Hi, everyone. Um, my name is Rita Schenkelberg. My pronouns are she and they. Um, I was, we were sworn in in January, so I haven't met Commissioner Adair, Commissioner DeBonne in person. Uh, so nice to meet you both. Saw Commissioner Chang a little bit on the campaign trail. Um, and really excited to have this joint conversation. I think it's so interesting, right? The layers of local government, the city kind of bounds and how much bigger the county is and how much more inclusive county services are around behavioral health and direct services specifically. So excited to kind of have this integrative conversation.
Thank you. Councillor Kiebler.
Hi, everybody. Councillor Melanie Kiebler here. Um, like Rita said, sworn in January this year. Um, I think I've, I've met um, all the commissioners in person. Had a chance to do an interview with uh, Commissioner DeBonne, which was fun. Um, yeah, and I'm excited um, to be here um, with everybody. And you said icebreaker twenty. I've been doing them at uh, our work staff meetings where you grab something off your desk. So I grabbed this little embroidery that I did and says, "We can do hard things." So that's my, my theme for today. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you. Councillor Perkins.
Hi. I have, on my desk, I have caffeine and peanut butter, um, which shows you how much I've been sitting at my desk the last few days. Um, but hi, I'm Megan Perkins, and um, I was sworn in on January sixth, um, the four of us were. And I'm really excited about today because, you know, I, I say this a lot, but I, I think it's, I think it's so true that, you know, decisions shouldn't be made in a vacuum, and it's important to get a real broad perspective. Um, yes, we are the biggest city in Deschutes County, um, but we are a region and we are part of a region. And so um, I'm really looking forward to not only getting to specifics today, but really seeing what kind of common ground that we can find and sort of a common path forward that we can find as a city and as a county.
Thank you. So I'm Sally Russell. I was actually elected to council in November twenty twelve. Um, and became Ben's first elected mayor since nineteen twenty-three, um, beginning two and a half years ago, in twenty eighteen. Um, I'm just so pleased we're all here together and yeah, let's try to get something regularly um, on the schedule now that we can, so we can build our schedules around that. Um, and one of the reasons I was so pleased is that I certainly, over the past year, with all the different projects, um, and it, and voices the city's been hearing, partnerships around our community are becoming increasingly important with the other taxing entities, and we all, um, there's so many projects and issues now that cross these boundaries. Uh, so every opportunity we have to team together and use the different skills, the different sets of resources. Um, right, and really find those areas where we can build bridges and come together and create outcomes on behalf of the greater good of our community. That's so important. So thank you. Um, and I'm looking forward to seeing what comes, you know, out of this meeting. And even though this meeting is primarily informational, it still sets the groundwork for all these decisions that each one of our bodies will be making and creates better understanding of what we can do together and those places where we can really provide strong intersections and move things faster, even though the pace of government is sometimes careful and strategic. So with that, um.
So one more, no, pardon, Miss Mayor. I just, one more, two business. I just, I can't help it today. So uh, Nick LeLac is joining us, and today it's special because today's his second day joining us as county administrator. So for thirty days, we have two county administrators, and they're both going to do a great job. Uh, but so Nick LeLac is our, our choice, and he's even joined us as county administrator position. So we want to thank him for joining us also. Uh, and then as I say, so uh, I see Eric and Nick have kind of the same, you know, white shirt. The uniform.
Yes, I see the white, the white shirt theme around here.
Thank you.
And yes, um, yeah, I do want to recognize Eric King, our city manager, and I know we have a lot of other city staff that are, that we'll be seeing as we move through this agenda. So with that, I think it makes sense to move forward. Um, with the next item on our agenda, which is um, linking a joint projects. Okay, so ten minutes.
Sorry, Mayor, to interrupt. Um, I did have one more question on the last item agenda, if we could stick with that just for a couple more minutes. Or on the, um, the Housing Works project. Yeah.
So it's one thirty. I'm going to give us three minutes to move through this. And then we may just need to move through, um, you know, we may need to set sort of a parking lot where some of these questions will record and then we can, we can move back to if we have time at the end of this meeting or in future meetings. So go ahead, please.
Sure. Yeah, I just would love to understand a little bit more the county's decision to do this as a purchase and sale instead of surplusing the land to Housing Works. Um, because what's ended up happening is Housing Works then came to the city to our Affordable Housing Fund to get money to purchase the land from the county. So as we continue to look for, um, you know, working together to create affordable housing projects, I'd love to understand the thought process there, just for us to understand going forward.
Thank you. Who would like to help us just quickly understand that? Commissioner Chang, you see your hand is up?
I can't, I can't explain the whole thought process, but I, I would just like to put out the um, a, a little bit of history and, and perspective on, on these kinds of issues. Uh, the county has in the past, uh, on numerous occasions, contributed.
on numerous occasions contributed lands to affordable housing projects. In, you know, like, right, right now, we're in the works of negotiating a project with, that's going to be in Lapine. The Skyline Village project in Redmond was just mentioned. The, the county has also contributed substantial amounts of land to various, you know, good, good causes in, and important public purposes in the, the city of Bend, you know, the OSU Cascades and Juniper Ridge being, being notable examples of that. But I, I very much think that the county, the lands that the county owns, we, we, it is a very appropriate thing to use those, to contribute those lands to important public purposes in our communities. And, and in my mind, affordable housing is one of those. So when, when Counselor Schenkelberg, Counselor Schenkelberg set, put out that concept of using the, the funds from this for the Stabilization Center, I, I, I like that idea. What I would like actually even more would be for these funds to be contributed to, uh, these funds to be given to the county in exchange for that property and for the county to then turn around and use those dollars on some other kind of housing type project. We, this is jumping ahead, but the other, just a couple of days ago, we made a $2 million commitment to the Cleveland Commons supportive, supportive housing project. And at that time, I, with, with David Brand sitting there from Housing Works, I joked or only half jokingly said, you know, "We could take the million dollars that you're giving us for Connors and turn around and put it into Cleveland Commons." So that's, you know, just another, another thought on where your affordable housing dollars could go via this pathway.
Thank you. Um, so we're gonna, I think I'm, again, I'm going to try to move this agenda along. We have a lot of places, if we want to get through this entire agenda today, and I think we should for overview, overview purposes, I, I'm going to move us on to the next item. I see Councilor Campbell, that you have a comment for the purposes of just getting through our agenda. I'm going to move us forward.
We have Peter Ditts, the mayor.
Thank you. Um, we, we have six projects. I think if we can stick to two minutes on each project, so really quick, high level overview, that would be great. Thank you. And we're going to start with the Veterans Village. Kristi, I think you had some pictures to share with us.
I can pull that up again. I think there was one other topic on the surplus property discussion. Should we skip through that or come back to that?
Um, why, why don't you continue? I'm not sure. Maybe I have. Yes, move forward with that. I'm not sure I see it on this agenda. Maybe there is an updated one. So, thank you.
Yeah, so I wanted to provide a little bit of context on another opportunity to work together on surplus property for affordable housing. And so Kristi, I don't know if you're still on there and want to give a little bit of background. We'll jump back into this really quickly and then I can talk about what we are hoping to do going forward. That works.
Absolutely. Thank you, Lynn. So the county-owned property on Simpson, this property used to be a complete parcel with the OSU Cascades property. And when the property was conveyed to OSU Cascades, this strip property that you see here was partitioned and continued to remain in county ownership. So over the last several months, we've had multiple interested parties come to us, come to the county, asking about this property and, and whether there would be any interest in doing sort of partnerships for affordable housing, workforce housing and whatnot. So in having multiple discussions with our board, basically the, the board had decided that we would like to go out for an RFP to find a developer and ask that we work with the city on what that might look like. So Lynn and I have met a couple of times and kind of talked through that and are, are starting to work the process of maybe of, of putting a draft RFP together. We're in the early phases of that, but it's an exciting opportunity to work together and see what we can do to maximize this property to bring additional housing to the region. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Lynn.
Yeah, so I wanted to talk a little bit about how the city handles surplus property for affordable housing, just very briefly. And mayor, I will try to, try to keep this quick. Typically, what we do is sell for cost. And the reason for that is sort of the opportunity cost of the funds. Basically, you cannot build affordable housing in Bend today without subsidy. It's just not possible. And I have thrown this challenge out to our community a number of times and, and the same thing is true today. If you can prove me wrong, I would be thrilled, absolutely thrilled. But so, so typically we do it at cost. That way the city comes out whole. And the city also uses our advisory committee, the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee. We refer to them as AHAC, as the Technical Arm for Housing Discussion at the city of Bend. So AHAC begins the process. We typically would issue an RFP. We'd talk about what that cost is likely to be. In this case, we have a great support from what I call my strike team, senior planning, senior engineers who come in and provide a little bit of context ahead of time at the front end of the RFP, so that folks know what to expect and what we're looking for. At that point, there is a mandatory pre-app during that application timeframe so that we can review whether or not these, these projects are feasible in the way that they're being presented and, and folks have the chance to make adjustments if it's not really feasible or if there are some offsite infrastructure needs that weren't accounted for. Then there is typically an oral presentation by applicants to the committee. Committee asks sometimes some very challenging questions. They really get into the weeds on financing, on feasibility, on the project team and whether that team has the ability and strength to pull it off. All of the questions that most of the rest of us don't know how to ask or don't know we should ask. So really a phenomenal group to work with. And then the idea is that this group, the AHAC, would then present to the county commission a recommendation for who should be awarded this parcel. And in this case, I've been told that we could get quite a few units on this parcel. It's actually really a great one, although it looks really funky. And so the closest example that I have to this is a surplus property from a few years ago that the city actually awarded to Housing Works. It's right across from the police station, just south of Pilot Buton 15. And that's another sort of remnant right-of-way parcel that is now producing 24 units over commercial space for intellectually and developmentally disabled adults, among other special populations. So what we all thought was just sort of an unusable patch of weeds has become a really phenomenal opportunity to help some of the folks who most need it in a location that's pretty perfect for them. So similarly, this site is in an area that the state considers an opportunity area, which means the schools are really good. There's excellent sort of wealth building opportunity in the neighborhood. And that scores very highly on financing requests to the state for, for federal and state financing. So this is a tremendous opportunity for us to move forward. I will tell you that if you all choose to look at surplus in a different way, please let me know if I can be a resource in any way, shape or form, or the AHAC can. Just so you know, the last time we had about $900,000 to spend from our Affordable Housing Fund, we were able to fund approximately 500 units. So really great potential. We leveraged the heck out of things. Oftentimes, it's, you know, a million dollars to 80 million is what we're able to bring in from external resources. So more than happy to talk to you about any of that as we proceed. And with that, I think that's all I have unless there are additional questions. I can talk a little bit more about sort of the factors and drivers of affordable housing if, if you wish, but I think we probably are pretty limited on time. So I'm just going to skip over that unless somebody wants something different.
I don't see any questions, so let's move us in. Thank you very much. So who's going to drive the existing joint projects? Kristi, Carolyn, Molly Wells, Thurling, Colleen Thomas, and Tom and Eric will wrap this up.
I think the first project was Veterans Village, so Tom, is Kristi?
Yeah. Kristi is teed up.
Yeah, so Lynn, Lynn was going to display some pictures. I forwarded over to her. So just to give everybody a refresher, so the Veterans Village project became a realization and collaboration with many, many stakeholders throughout the community. I think one thing that we really need to celebrate is I went back and, and also talking with Eric Tobiason with Ben Hero's Foundation, there's been over 35 public and private organizations that have contributed to this project. So I think that's really something to, to stop and really celebrate. It's pretty, pretty phenomenal. Um, so the Veterans Village project is 15 cottage tiny home units that are situated, that are in the development process and situated on the public safety, uh, public safety campus on about 1.29 acres. It includes a community building that was actually just delivered a week, a week and a half ago. And as you can see here on the screen, the slab there was poured to support the community service building. And then the picture on the right shows that the building is delivered and it's in place and they're just kind of getting everything situated. So, um, the project is moving along. It's had some challenges along the way. And Eric Tobiason and his mighty group of volunteers have done, I believe, a phenomenal job to keep this moving. There's just, again, been some obstacles along the way. So the overall timeline is a little behind, but he's very optimistic to get this done and, and hand it over to Central Oregon Veterans Outreach to get the units occupied by winter. So I just wanted to share a few highlights and kind of where the timeline is moving forward. So August accomplishments include 14 of the 15 cabins standing, as you can see sort of in the pictures. 10 cabins have been frame roofed and electrical has been completed. And the community building, as you can see, has been delivered and installed. So September goals include completing the cabins, so all kind of the final finish work and finishing out the community building, collecting, or excuse me, connecting to utilities and also the final grading. And then October, they're going to move into paving the driveway, the walkway and the parking lot, completing landscaping and getting the certificate of occupancy. So again, those are October goals. So at this point, Eric is planning on doing an opening ceremony on Veterans Day, which is November 11th. So that's incredibly exciting. So with that being said, what will likely happen is Central Oregon Veterans Outreach will start selecting and determining who will be occupying these units starting around mid to later October. So with that, I'm happy to try to answer any questions you might have.
I just wanted to say, this is Commissioner Adair. I was there on Tuesday and the tiny homes actually have little bathrooms in them, sinks and toilets, which I was originally the only person that wanted that and then somehow Eric thought it was a great idea. So, and a year ago, September 1st, we actually visited the Clackamas Veterans Village and they clearly gave us the input that 15 tiny homes was really perfect. You get above 15 and you have a personality issue. So I, I do think that's worth mentioning. We really thought this was going to be open last year and I'm so happy that it's finally going to open this year because I have a feeling we're going to have a really cold winter. So I totally appreciate, I believe, someone just walked up in the community and donated another $100,000 to the project. So it's unbelievable, the generosity of our community. And thank goodness, it's going to be opening shortly with Covo running it. So thanks, Kristi, for your tour. And it was, it looked great on Tuesday. They're going to move the fence and the wood fence we put up between the tiny homes and the homeowners on the other side is outstanding. And I think they're really appreciative that we're doing a first-class job. Thanks, Kristi. I know you've had a lot of meetings on it.
Yes, wonderful project. Commissioner Debone, and then we'll move forward to talk about the Navigation Center.
Counselor Keebler had her hand up too.
Really? Counselor Keebler.
Quick, Kristi, you might have said it and I may have missed it, but how long did it take to, to get this to the point where it's going to open? And I know there was obviously some COVID delays, but how long was this in the works before we get to, you know, November and it's going to be open?
Um, so like, what's the overall timeline? So the county committed to this, I don't know the exact date, sometime in 2020. We finished the memorandum of understanding between Bend Heroes, Covo and the county, as well as the ground lease with, with Covo. We finished all that in about mid-March of this year. So construction started a little bit prior to that. We were able to work through that with, with Bend Hero. So they've just been really, you know, working hard to get that done. Again, they ran into some challenges and, and a lot of, you know, they, they've done a great job, an amazing job. And they, you know, they've had Hayden, project managers with Hayden Homes, working pro bono, project management, which has been phenomenal too. They've been great to work with. So I think with the timeline, it's coming along well. And again, with the goal to be occupied before winter hits, so.
Great, thanks.
So, yeah, quick statement. So the idea is that the vision is it's a transitional housing opportunity. Somebody could be in there short term or generally up to about two years. But in, in Clackamas, we did tour it. They said, "There's a subset of people that can come in and get stabilized and either find permanent supportive housing, figure out their finances, get stabilized for other issues and move out of there." So there's 15 units, but we think it'll be, you know, many people rolling through there each year. So that, that's the vision at this point.
And I just wanted to mention really quickly, this was a joint project. All these projects are, have both city and county involvement. The city participated by, uh, basically exempting the SDCs. Our building department, just shout out to our building department. I mean, this is a new type of, of, of building, new type of structure and we worked really closely with the applicant to make sure that this was a safe product that complied with building codes in a creative way.
And we also funded it through the Affordable Housing Fund at about $250,000, I believe, as well. So really a great example of, of working together and thank you all for your support on this.
Yes, thank you. Let's talk about the Navigation Center.
I keep losing myself. Okay. Hold on. My screen?
Looks pretty good.
Okay, thanks. Sorry. I just, sorry, I can't get my camera on. Oh my goodness. There's got to be a better way. Well, I'll talk to you and then I'll see if I can get myself on the screen as we're going. I'm so sorry. So we have two projects I want to talk about. This is the overall work that the city of Bend has underway right now. The Navigation Center is one of the projects that we have just absolutely expedited. And just so you have some context on the Navigation Center, a Navigation Center really is, it's, it's what we would think about as the, like a winter warming shelter. So it's emergency shelter, it's low barrier. And it operates all day long though. So one of the real challenges, as you all know, that we've had with even the winter warming shelter is that there's really been a difficulty with where folks who need the overnight accommodation have a place to go during the day. And so the Navigation Center is meant to be an emergency shelter, just the way we think of the winter warming shelters, open all year and open during the day. And a series, a whole, there are, are available to those who, who want access to them. They may also need a place to stay or they may need a place to pick up mail or fill out some paperwork or get on a computer and apply for a job. So it's, it's, it's all those services. We received the money from the state to open and we need to be open at the end of June next year. And you may have heard us talk about the RFQ that we've done. We had 14 agencies come in and tell us how they could provide services at the, at the new Navigation Center. And we were set to go out with the RFP for the actual operator or operators if need be, but we don't have a location. And so I think it's definitely a place, so if you, you have a location that you think could work for the Navigation Center, feel free to email or text me. But this is one of the projects where we have money for operations and then Molly and Colleen and their team have some of the staffing that will come together for this project. The other project we have that has, you would have to be living under a rock to not have heard about this one, Project Turnkey. So we acquired with a state grant the property on Division Street. So the Bend Value Inn. Um, so the Bend Value Inn that has been, is now um uh in the asset portfolio of the city of Bend. This was a joint project between the city of Bend and Neighbor Impact. Um, and as you know, Neighbor Impact's one of your key partners and case management um from your team um will be provided um at at this site um in a whole series of ways, I'm sure. But we are um looking at the land use approval will not, will come through the supersiting bill that was allowed for the hotels to convert. Um, and we um also, this is another low-barrier shelter. So we talk about, it's really in contrast to Bethlehem Inn. Um, this low-barrier shelter will be one that, as long as the households who have a place here, um as long as they continue to respect that space um and follow the rules of engagement, they will be able to continue at this space. This will be a place where households will call home. So this will not be a place where someone can knock on the door and ask for a meal or or ask for medical services. This will be a place like any of us call home. Um, people will have parking spots, they'll have their own space. They'll be able to go to work, their their kids will get picked up to go to school. Um, and it is transitional housing in that we hope families will stay for a short period of time. Um, they'll they'll be under case management and then they'll get into whatever the next level of housing is for them. So we are finalizing what those renovations look like and we hope to have renovation underway this fall. And that's all I got. If I can stop sharing.
Thank you. Now we'll learn a little bit about COVID shelters. Molly?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, for the record, Molly Wells-Darling, Dushuts County Health Services. So I'm going to talk a little bit about our COVID shelters that we developed at the beginning of uh the COVID pandemic. As you all know, um we ended up uh partnering with Neighbor Impact, Reach, Family Kitchen, Mosaic to open a COVID shelter for our homeless population. Um, it serves dual purposes. Uh, there are twenty rooms for individuals who have high medical needs that we wanted to make sure were in a safe location where they could isolate and um and hopefully contain or limit any spread of COVID. And then we also had uh six rooms when we initially opened for people who were experiencing homelessness and needed to isolate in a safe place. In our last surge, we ended up having to add some additional rooms. So we added um six rooms from another motel. Um, and now in this current surge, we're actually having to add more rooms because of um, for the most part, we're at capacity. Uh, so we're very thankful to City of Bend. We're currently in discussions with them about using some of the rooms um at Project Turnkey um to help with isolating our our individuals who are homeless and need a safe place to isolate. But I'm just going to keep it short because I know that we're behind. Any question?
I don't see any hands up at this time. Thank you.
Yeah.
Um, permanent support housing. Colleen Thomas? Uh, I see Council Keebler and Council Perkins.
Call it Council Perkins.
I just want to um, uh Commissioner DePone wanted um someone to say to the people that were listening to us um to explain sort of what low barrier versus high barrier means, because we sort of use those terms a lot when we're talking about this. Um, low barrier means there are no conditions, um not a lot of conditions for entry. Um, and high barrier means that there are usually some form of condition, um for instance, um being sober or something like that um in order to, for entry at these shelters. Um, and secondly, I just wanted to really put up in a plug, um this Navigation Center, this is a really important opportunity for our city. Um, and we need all the help we can get to find a location for this, for this Navigation Center. We have the money, which is, you know, which is usually the hard part, um but it's finding the land, that's that's going to be the hard part for this. So um just wanted, just put the word out there that this is something that we really need to all uh work together on. So thank you.
Thank you. And Council Keebler.
Uh, just a quick logistical question. People are typing in the chat, but I don't know that the public can see that. And is that going to be saved and published? Otherwise, I think we should just chat. That's, I think, that I just, I have a question about that. Um, and then I had a question about this um, this program of of hotel vouchers. Um, this seems like it's really successful in 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 serving its purpose. I'm wondering if there's any way to think about, gosh, if we ever kind of get out of this pandemic and stop having the need to put people in there for medical reasons, but we can con- continue the program as an emergency housing um program to to get people housed that need that um temporary housing. Um, because it seems like it's been so successful, it might make sense to try to continue it.
I would actually ask if she's still on here, Colleen, um um to address that because she has the most experience with uh housing vouchers and how that works.
Um, yes. Yes, thank you, Mayor and um Commission. My, for the record, my name is Colleen Thomas, Homeless Services Coordinator for Dushuts County. I think that's a great question, Council Keebler. Um, I think that there are different, um, a lot of different details that go into um managing a motel. Um, it has been very successful and that's in part because of all of our wonderful uh collaboration and partnerships with uh different agencies across our community. Um, it's it's a lot of work. Um, but I do think that, you know, that's part of the conversation is how do we move forward? And I think a great example of that is probably Project Turnkey and how we move those projects forward. It is um a sex- a successful program, uh you know, especially in the state of Oregon. So I think that there's open conversation to that, but it's going to take a lot of um building capacity for service provision um because it is a lot of onsite needs for that population. And if it's okay, but there's aren't, there are any other questions about the isolation motel, I'll jump into permanent supportive housing if that's okay. All right, so I have, okay, thank you. I have a few um slides to share with you all just in regards to um permanent supportive housing. Hopefully you can see that I'm not tech savvy. See those slides?
Yeah.
Okay, great.
Yes, it looks good.
Great, thank you. Um, so I'm just here to talk about permanent supportive housing and specifically um the proposed project at Cleveland Commons. Um, luckily, um the Board of County Commissioners just recently allocated two million dollars to go towards this project for capital funding. Um, this is a partnership between our community action agency, Neighbor Impact, and our housing authority, Housing Works. Um, the proposed project will be um the development of a thirty-six unit um permanent supportive housing program. Um, the location is located off of um Cleveland Avenue, um the corner of Cleveland Avenue and Southeast, Southeast Fifth Street. Um, the population that will be served by this uh project will be those uh individuals that are chronically homeless in our community. As you can see, there, the definition for chronically homeless is pretty in-depth. Um, so it it's not just all individuals experiencing homelessness, but our chronically homeless individuals in the community. Um, so the proposed project will be thirty-six units. Those will include studio apartments as well as one-bedroom units. Um, and so we, in twenty twenty, our point-in-time count, which is our annual count of individuals experiencing homelessness, there are two hundred and eighty-six individuals that were surveyed, which all were voluntary um individuals that would meet the criteria for permanent supportive housing. So there's definitely a need. Um, so thirty-six units might seem like a low number, but it is going to have a larger impact on our community. All right, so the importance of permanent supportive housing, um I did present a couple of weeks ago, I think it was now, to the Board of County Commissioners just in regards to what is permanent supportive housing and how do, how is it um successful in our community? When we talk about the cost of permanent supportive housing and other projects, really permanent supportive housing, the investment on, and the inter- return on our investment is uh really important to see. As you can see, the Oregon Housing and Community Services um Department of the State did this assessment in twenty nineteen to compare the costs of what it costs for individuals that either stay at the state hospital, emergency room, or county jail versus the cost of what it would take to provide permanent supportive housing. Um, so. Yes.
We're, we're still seeing your slide with the uh layout of the, of the proposed group comments. I think you might have another slide.
Okay, thank you. Again, I'm not tech savvy. There we go. How about there? Good? Thank you.
That's better. Thank you.
Yeah, great. Thank you all. Um, so again, as you can see there, um the cost uh difference between this different kind of interventions that are available for individuals that are experiencing um homelessness. The cost of permanent supportive housing is is at a much lower rate than um say, someone needing a night uh at the emergency room. Big piece that I think is really important when we talk about permanent supportive housing, the National Alliance to End Homelessness um in two thousand and eighteen um did a survey and that it um individuals experiencing chronically, uh chronic homelessness uh decreased by twenty-eight percent when we provide permanent supportive housing. So again, this is a great impact on the overall population in our community um and across the nation. As you see different interventions in regards to addressing homelessness, permanent supportive housing is one of the um most invested in our, in in the nation with the highest return on um impacts on lowering the causes of homelessness as well. Um, so I, I know I will keep it short. Um, I know that there's a lot to be talked about today, but again, we're really excited about the opportunity for potentially to um have this type of program in our community. It's going to take some time and um collaboration across uh community partners and agencies to be able to provide services for this population. Um, but it's exciting and it fills a gap within our continuum of care and the highest need for those experiencing homelessness, specifically chronic homelessness in our community.
Thank you. And then we're going to wrap it up with talking about the Emergency Homelessness Task Force with Tom and Eric.
Yeah, I'll, I'll take you this one.
And I see Counselor, although I see Counselor Campbell, you had a question? Sorry.
Thank you. Um, Colleen, thank you so much and thanks for your work. I know it can be such a thankless job and so frustrating at times. Um, the Fuse Group was one that I was very much involved in and have kind of lost touch. Is is that, are are they in any way involved in this program or this project?
Yes, I think right now, so at this point in time, great question, um Counselor Campbell. Um, the project itself is being managed or run, the owner-operator is going to be Neighbor Impact and Housing Works. They will put out an RFP for an operator um as well as a service provider. We're hoping that Fuse will be a part of that discussion. Currently, the county is in partnership with Fuse to provide services for their scattered site model, which is eight units of permanent supportive housing. Um, and they are a permanent supportive housing um entity in our community. So um I believe that they will have a strong um partnership in this program moving forward. That is great to hear. Thank you so much.
All right, well, I'm just going to uh make up some time here and introduce Brittany Manzo. Uh, Brittany is helping us, uh us being the city and county and many other stakeholders uh as we formed an Emergency Homelessness Task Force. Uh, that began, we began that process last fall uh with conversations that Tom and I had along with Carolyn Egan and others to build towards a, an effort where our agencies are working together to identify gaps in our continuum of services and how we could better um fund uh and really look for sustainable funding and governance models. Um, and I'm going to have Brittany, uh who we've hired to help us as an expert. Brittany has a background as a housing and homelessness policy strategist, advisor and facilitator on pursuing racial equity and housing justice. Um, she's worked for the U.S. Interagency Council on Homelessness, um the National Innovation Service, um transforming, really creating transformative approaches to houselessness solutions. Um, working for uh with local government from small to large cities, including rural areas. So quite, quite an extensive experience. Um, and uh Brittany has been helping lead the last, uh really almost from the beginning. We've had, I think, now three, maybe four meetings. Uh, Brittany can correct me uh so she can give you a sense of what our objectives are, both in the short and long term. Um, and then that'll help provide some background as we begin to kind of strategize together on some solutions.
Great, thank you so much, Eric. Can you all see my screen okay? Great. Hi, everyone. Thank you so much for having me today. Um, I'm so happy to join you. I'm going to dive right into it. I'm going to offer an overview of the task force, a little bit of our history, which Eric's already gotten into, and and our priorities. Uh, so the task force was jointly established and co-chaired by uh Commissioner Cheng and Counselor Perkins. First meeting launched in June with the purpose of bringing the most informed minds on houselessness together to inform the investment opportunities that are in front of Bend and the the county right now, as well as the strategies and capacity needs in the community to address the crisis of houselessness. Um, we're on a rather tight timeline, which reflects the urgency of the issue. Um, we stood up in June and we will be wrapping up in November. It's a, a tight timeline. But again, like I said, it it uh really reflects the urgency and the scope of partners that we have at the table to get the job done in that amount of time. So in addition to city and county staff, um and when I say city, I mean Bend, we also have Redmond at the table. Uh, we have a number of collaborating agencies who are at the table as emergency ho- houselessness task force members. Um, I've put the list up here to not spend your time going through them. But as this indicates, a lot of the projects that you've heard about today are implicit and built in and connected to the task force. Folks have work going on every day, looking ahead um to plans for the future, the urgent work of the moment. But what we're, what we're doing together at the task force is building stronger collaboration locally. Um, so I put up our, our timeline and I'm happy to go back to members if, if it's helpful at any time. But we're, we're kind of on two tracks here. Um, highlighted in the yellow, you'll see our strategic plan process. We're working toward uh developing a strategic plan for Dushuts County with a focus on uh Bend and Redmond um and that the county level as well. Um, to look, look at what the gaps are in the system for people experiencing homelessness and what our needs are. Um, so right now, we've ex- we've focused on stakeholder mapping, making sure we do have the most informed minds on houselessness at the table. Uh, we've brought some new members in just this last week uh to inform our strategies. And we're starting to work through roles. What are roles and responsibilities of providers of the city, of the county, um of federal funding streams, of states' funding streams, so that we can weave all of those together into a comprehensive response to houselessness uh in Central Oregon. Um, and so we are right now at a place where I am just gathering data every single day on everything from affordable housing to staffing capacity for service provision. Um, and we'll be bringing a gaps analysis to our September twenty-eighth task force meeting so that we have a shared understanding of the strengths in the community when it uh comes to responding to homelessness and where we have room for improvement and further uh uh capacity needs um as, as homelessness is growing uh in the middle of the pandemic. So as we move into October, we'll be developing shared strategies to figure out where exactly our money needs to be going, our attention needs to be going. Um, and that's, that's really going to be built on the expertise of service providers, of the need of people experiencing homelessness as they stated themselves. Um, and then by the end of November, we'll be launching a strategic plan to prevent and end homelessness uh in the region. So, so stay tuned for that. But along the way, I mentioned there are two tracks of work. Along the way, we have a few subgroups that are working on these more urgent priorities that are right in front of us that we've heard a lot about today. Um, I'm actually going to start from the bottom because that's, that's where we left off right before I was speaking. Um, so Fuse and Housing Works are leading a subgroup to explore financing opportunities and sustainable funding models for supportive housing. So while we stand up shelters and emergency housing uh amidst the pandemic, we know that there is a significant unmet need for folks who are experiencing chronic homelessness. And so um Housing Works and Fuse are working uh to find a, a researcher and facilitator to explore sustainable financing options to establish more permanent supportive housing. Um, we're also working closely uh between the city and the county in bringing in service providers to inform the authorized encampment service package. So when someone is deciding to live at the managed camp, uh we're clear about what services are available, when and how they're connected to them, um and designing that model uh collaboratively right, right now. Um, Carolyn spearheading that process with some stakeholder engagement. Um, but we're, we're housing this collaboration under the task force because it's really modeling the level of city-county-provider collaboration that we need in order to get sustainable strategies put in place. Um, right now, as we, as we look across the, the landscape in Central Oregon, there is not enough staff. There are not enough service providers. We have a lot of gaps. And so we need to be efficient in our collaboration. Um, but we can't, we can't uh drop collaboration just, just because we're, we're strapped for resources at the moment. Um, and the third subgroup that we have running is around emergency protocols. And and Molly with the county is managing. And Molly with the county is managing that work to establish shared regional protocols for emergencies like fire, heat, smoke and the cold for people experiencing homelessness, particularly folks that are out in the woods and, and more difficult to get to in moments of crisis who may need service access. And so that work is up and running and moving forward across all three groups. So we'll have updates there, but wanting to just open it up to see if folks had any questions about the task force membership, the strategic plan. I might also defer to Counselor Perkins and Commissioner Cheng as our co-chairs of the task force.
I see one hand up. This, sorry, Commissioner Devon.
Yeah, sorry, somebody else had a hand up, I didn't see it. So what are the questions I have, Brittany? And this is for all of us. You know, are we working towards the day that we can ask somebody not to be on the side of the road, the right of way? You know, are, are we setting up our public safety to say, you can't be here, but you can be there? Because I, I do kind of, there's no real clarity on, you know, what, are we gonna get to that moment? And when are we gonna get to that moment? And is that the goal? You know, so if you've done this around the country a little bit, you know, we've seen a lot of big jurisdictions where it just keeps going and going and going. No matter how many resources you have, it just keeps getting worse. So, I mean, that's, it's a discussion for all of us. But you have thoughts on that, Brittany?
Sure, you're absolutely right. This is happening around the country where there may be resources, but they're not always resources that are reliable for people experiencing homelessness or necessarily have the services and supports that people who are experiencing homelessness want and need. So that's part of the strategic planning process is looking at what do we have available to folks? What do folks say they need and how do we bridge any gaps in between? And I think the hope here is that we start, or really continue creating options for people that are better than living in places that may endanger others or be a risk to public safety. It is, there, there's work at the state level around encampment issues, but establishing managed camps doesn't give the authority to clear other encampments. So I think our hope and our priority strategies here are to make sure we understand what people experiencing homelessness need and want and get that to them because no one wants to be living by the side of the road.
Well, but that's interesting. And as I say, I struggle with this, you know. So we're gonna do a lot of effort and we're not even working towards asking somebody to move from the public right of way situation, you know. And as I say, I'm just laying that out. This is our joint meeting for everybody to discuss. Thank you.
I, I think I would challenge the, the premise of the question, which assumes, I actually don't really know what it assumes, but I think the goal, or at least my goal, is to prevent people from being on the side of a road in the first place. So that we can prevent homelessness, prevent housing insecurity before it leads to chronic homelessness. And get folks who are, as you put it, Commissioner, on the side of the road into a safe, humane situation. But that's why I think we need a centralized office with a goal of preventing and ending homelessness in this jurisdiction.
Yeah, yeah. So, but we're not working towards that.
Um, I think, I see Counselor Keebler and Counselor Perkins. Your hands are going up and down. So.
I'll go first.
Counselor Keebler, would you like to speak to that a little bit?
Tony, I think what this task force is, is working towards is that strategic plan. And the plan is to end homelessness. And so that means people aren't on the side of the street, or if they are on the side of the street, we have somewhere for them to go. And I think we're still working on one, getting to the point where we have the capacity for our service providers in this, in this region to serve everybody and to be full partners and not to be strapped and burned out. But also to have that plan. And I think that's what's really exciting about the Emergency Task Force is that, is that, that's what they're gonna be launching later this year. And getting to that point where we make that plan. That's what we're doing. In the interim, though, we have these urgent needs, right? And we would like to try to get people off of the street as much as we can into something that's safer. And so I think that's, that's what we're working on. So, and, and I just, one more thing. There's a valid question in the chat that I think Tom put in that asks about how law enforcement's involved. And I, I think the task force members can talk to that. But also the comment that this population is rife with criminals and, and I want to push back on that. And I think that that's the attitude that we have to push back against in our community, that these are people that are, you know, they're just like you and me, but they are in a situation that we don't find ourselves in. And I think there is an obligation for their safety and for the community's safety to help them get out of that situation. And I think that's what this is all about. So.
I would like to point out that was not me who put that in chat. I don't know if somebody else named, somebody else named Tom was able to use chat.
Good clarification. So, so another way to ask this question, and Anthony, you know, what day do we say, okay, you're not allowed to sit next or sleep next to this no camping sign? You know, I mean, it's kind of a silly, rude question, but it's reality, you know, what day do we say?
Sure, but.
Thank you. You cannot sleep next to this no camping sign anymore, which is a public policy to enforce laws.
Right, let's follow federal law. Let's, you know, let's follow federal law. I don't think we need to answer that question today as long as we have a common goal of
Oh, yeah.
ensuring our constituents are safe, which I know we do.
Part of the plan. That's what I'm referring to, you know? It's just one of those to-do items. That's what I'm referring to.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, I think that that's, I, I think you're, you're slightly putting the cart in front of the horse because federal law prevents us from even sort of asking those questions at this point. I mean, we can, we can philosophize about it, but I think the, the bigger issue is how are we gonna keep our constituents safe? Housed and unhoused.
Commissioner Cheng? I think you're still muted. You're muted.
I got the hand down, not the, not the mic on. I wanted to give a little bit more background on the Emergency Homeless Task Force. But, you know, kind of to, just to touch on the conversation that was just happening. The, the, the goal is absolutely to a, a, address homelessness. I mean, we want, we ideally want less people to be homeless. But we want people who we do not have the capacity to, 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 to shelter, to have safe, safe places for them and safe places for everyone else in the community to, to be. But really importantly, I wanted to mention that the people around the table at the Emergency Homeless Task Force really are the experts in our community on this subject. And they come from a vast array of backgrounds, medical, behavioral health, you know, people who've been doing service, direct service provisions to the homeless, law enforcement to, to, we still don't quite know who Tom is. But to answer Tom's question, both the Sheriff's Office and the City of Bend Police Department are represented on the Emergency Homeless Task Force. So we, we're, we're trying to bring together all these perspectives and all, all these people who have different angles and insights on the, you know, this phenomenon of homelessness, which in itself is really complex, to help us develop a strategy to move forward to address those, those goals of reducing the amount of homelessness. And then for people who we, we, we can't get a roof over their head to provide the most humane and, and safe for them and for everyone else a situation possible.
Thank you. Counselor Schenkelberg?
Thanks, Mayor. Just kind of a point of clarification. If none of the counselors or commissioners are able to moderate the chat and none of the staff are, can we turn it off? And, and I think that someone just responded in chat to answer my question, so I will look at that in a second. And the second piece around, you know, people experiencing houselessness, this is a public health crisis, period. We will have snow in like two months and people are gonna die again. And that's what we're trying to address. And I don't think that any system has a perfect answer or to Tony's point or Commissioner Devon's, Devon's point, like, is there an end? Because we don't know what the world is gonna look like in three months. Like, we used to be able to plan, right, a couple of years out, and now we're in the middle of a global pandemic and all of this uprising. We don't know. We don't know if things are gonna get better. We don't know if we like build all of these, you know, housing units. It's going to remedy kind of all the people who are struggling right now. And so it's like partially trying to kind of see into the future and also address the crisis of the next few months. And of course, like wishing that we kind of knew what was gonna happen, and we don't. But I do know that I want to prevent as many deaths as possible as we move forward into winter months.
Thank you. Counselor Perkins?
Yeah, I mean, just a couple of things. One of the things that, you know, this, this task force is trying to do is like, like Commissioner Cheng said, is, is really plan for the future. And not only plan for the future, but stick to that plan and be held accountable to that plan. These are, we, I think one of the things we have to do is stop seeing our house population as a nuisance. And these are our neighbors. These are the people that live in Deschutes County. Many of them have been here longer than, than I've been here. The, these are, these are our constituents. They are not a separate category of people that should be other. And so to me, the number one thing is to find as many different types of housing for, for them to live in. And that's what, I, I think I can speak for the city council and say that's what we're trying to do right now. We are trying to camps, shelters, hotels, anything that we possibly can to get as many people off the streets and in a safe environment. And it's safe for everybody. It's safer. I think that's the other thing to think of. The more, the more that we have managed camps, the more that we have these low barrier shelters. It provides safety for the people that live in that neighborhood. It provides safety for our unhoused population.
Thank you. I understand Commissioner Adair, I think you had a comment. If, the more you can use your hands, the more I know where to look, because I have so many faces in front of me. So it helps me find you more easily. You also queue up at the top of my screen when you raise your hand, so that also helps me find you quickly. So. Oh, thank you.
I, I wanted to address something that I think it's gone on for over forty years, where we actually have mentally ill people that are out on the streets. I just visited Deer Ridge in Madras. The prison is actually half empty. Of the minimum security prison, there are seven hundred and eighty people, sixty percent of them are mentally ill. A lot of the people on our streets are mentally ill. And what I've been trying to put together the last month and a half is actually have a mental health hospital on our side of the mountains. The state just approved sixty beds in Wilsonville. That's over in Wilsonville, but we truly need beds here. Deer Ridge, half of the facility, it, it's amazing. They've got a mental building, a mental, medical building with treatment rooms, a clinic. They've got housing and it is, it's, it's hardly been touched. It was built in two thousand and seven. So I'm trying to put something together, but clearly there are people out on the street that shouldn't be there. They need help. I mean, I even know people that are in, you know, a child in a home, a middle-aged child. It's so mentally ill, the parents can't leave them without worrying about that person being, you know, a danger to themselves and burning their house down. So I truly think we even need to go back further than just doing this temporary warming shelter. There are people seriously that we need to get more mental help. If you have a man, Dr. Will Berry, he is outstanding here in Deschutes County. And he said when he practiced interned in New York and worked there for a while with this mental health practice, that judges there would allow someone to go for housing for thirty days, where they could actually get a lot more help. And so that's really what I believe we need to bring more into the picture. It's, it's truly not working. The thirteen hundred and thirty-four dollars that the state hospital costs, I'm hoping that's high. I'm hoping we can do something on our side of the mountain. But the, the state hospital that was in Pendleton when I was a kid was converted to a prison. Well, I believe we need to go back the other way. So I just, I wanted to bring that up and I did want to say, I don't know if we're gonna have a moment to say it, but really putting that twenty-five unit homeless gathering between two schools, I walked it Tuesday. And I really believe that there's got to be a better location, truly a better location. And as I mentioned, the ward, the fire station that the park bought, you know, okay, maybe it's out there a bit, but truly we can have a bus system running. I, you know, I, that building, if you could work something out with Ben Parks and Rec, I think it's, it's a huge building. It has a kitchen in it. And, you know, we need somewhere where it's not in between two schools. And I know it's not too far from the school out there, but I still think it's a safer location. So thank you for letting me have my comment.
Thank you. Counselor Goodman Campbell?
Thanks, Mayor Russell. Just to kind of try to get us back on track with the agenda. I completely agree with Commissioner Adair that we need to talk about lots of different sites. We've, you know, started the conversation with the city-owned land on Ninth Street, but certainly welcome ideas that you all have of county-owned properties that could help us move quickly to get a safe place for our neighbors to, to stay, kind of open and operating. So please, if you have other suggestions that, that the county controls, that we can move quickly on, bring those to our attention. And Mayor Russell, I think I just would kind of urge us to get kind of onto, back onto the agenda wherever we're at. I've kind of lost our place, to be honest. So.
Yeah.
But I need her to talk about kind of the, the future, the future projects as well.
And I'm happy to help a little bit here. So I think the next topic is to, to really, as we begin to talk about strategies, is to, to better understand the resources that both the city and the county have been allocated as a result of the American Rescue Plan Act. And so Carolyn Egan, I think, was going to just quickly outline the city's plan, and I believe Greg Mun is gonna do the same for the county, just so that both bodies have visibility of, of the resources and with a particular focus around housing and homelessness. I think is the, is the interest here to then help move on to, move into the the strategy portion of our agenda to talk, what you, talk more about what you just mentioned, Counselor Goodman Campbell, managed camps, RV parks, or other ideas on where we can work together better.
Yeah, thank you.
Did I jump too far? Am I good? You see my screen? Okay. So from a city perspective, we got an allocation of just over fourteen million dollars. As you all know, we got the first tranche of that, so that's seven. And then through the legislative session, the city of Bend was also allocated for additional million dollars in state ARPA funds. So the way that we have this allocated at this time is the state ARPA funds are allocated in, in two buckets. One is around infrastructure. That's the green bar on the furthest right side of your screen. And that is really to do the work in the core of Bend around crossings east-west. So as we improve crossings and build capacity, not just for vehicles, but also pedestrians and bikes and probably scooters, I mean, quickly. Then we really can begin to get more housing in, in the core of town. And we know broadest variety of housing really can be put on the ground in that, in that most urban part of Bend. The other two million is for the acquisition of a second shelter. So the first shelter is the one on Division Street that Bend Value In, which we acquired with the Turnkey Grant. And then this is a two million dollar ARPA allocation to the city of Bend, and we're going to acquire the shelter on Second Street. So it's the one that you'll know of as the Shepherd House Shelter. It was operating as the warming shelter. It's now operating all year round. And then this will allow us to acquire the building and then really build it out to the facility that's needed to continue to provide those types of services. We've got some money allocated to both shelter renovations. We have some new staffing. One of them is me. And then we have two additional people. One will be in community relations and then the other will be in our facilities department so that we can manage the new assets we have in our portfolio. We've got the one point five allocated to managed camps. We've talked about this. This is really for site control, site management, and then operations. This one point five at this point had not been allocated to the caseworkers and peer mentors. Um, this one point five at this point had not been allocated to the caseworkers and peer mentors um, and other, um, medical and social service provision that might be, but this is for the really the site and, and the, and the safe place, um, where, um, that service provision, um, uh, can happen. We have some additional money allocated. You, we've talked about our affordable housing program, um, cost escalations are a real thing even for affordable housing projects. And so council directed, um, staff to put a little bit of money aside so that if, um, one of the projects that's already awarded um, has a funding gap, we've got an opportunity, um, to keep that project going and not have them have to wait for the eighty thousand dollars or whatever it would be, um, to keep that project, um, on its timeline. And then a series of, um, smaller amounts allocated to some workforce development and childcare. So really on the workforce side of childcare, um, we had already separately not ARPA money allocated, um, to do some more of the facility development of childcare. So this complements, um, the work that was adopted with just, um, general funds from the city of Bend, utility assistance. Um, you've all, if you've visited downtown Bend um, in the last eighteen months, it looks a little bit different as we tried to work with our restaurants and retailers to keep them open during the pandemic, um, and really want to look at um, what downtown Bend looks like going forward as, as we think about um, how we might use the sidewalk or even parts of the right of way differently. And then also as we think about a town of a hundred thousand plus, um, our downtown probably needs to be bigger. So thinking about extending the central business district zoning, um, to a larger footprint. So we can continue to urbanize that section of Bend. Um, then we've got some money in reserve and then you all know technically, um, one of the uses of the ARPA funds was to pay for eliminated positions due to COVID. And so that's that last allocation of money. You see that pink bar on the bottom? Many of these projects we expect other funds to come into. So they may be state, uh, city event, general fund. They could be um, other, other grants or, or other funding. It could even be some of our enterprise funding, um, that we use to continue to build out some of these progress. Thank you.
Thank you. I saw a lot there. Um, Craig.
Um, I can jump in while Greg's coming over. Um, uh, so the county has, uh, thirty-eight million, um, in ARPA funds over two years, nineteen this year. And, uh, we've been actively engaged in entertaining different ideas and projects and um, the commissioners have, uh, not been shy about, uh, allocating funds. So I see Greg's up now. He's going to share his screen and we'll give you a rundown of that.
Well, good afternoon, everybody. I think I know most of you, but for those that I don't, um, my name is Greg Mon. I'm the county treasurer and CFO. And, um, uh, with ARPA, I'm probably also taking on a title as the ARPA Sherpa. So I'm going to share with you my screen here. All right. You should see a spreadsheet. This doesn't look quite as good as Carolyn's does. And had I known she was going to do that, I would have put some more colors on here. Uh, so the, uh, I just want to mention a, a diff- a, a, a couple of things that have, uh, come up through ARPA that have changed from CARE. So when we initially started receiving CAREs funds, they were, these were dollars that were, as you probably all know, that were, there was a sense of urgency to get those dollars out on the street and, um, we, uh, they were more intended for triage and, um, to sort of build gaps immediately. Whereas with ARPA, it's more of a, the, it, the program's more set up for long-term investment or outcome based results and, uh, more thinking and uh, planning in how these funds are used. So with, uh, our funds, which we, the counties, you know, the county received, um, an allocation of thirty-eight million dollars, nineteen million of that was received in May and the second tranche comes next May. So what we've done, working with the commissioners is to uh, explore these areas of needs and priorities that the board has expressed to date. And, and these are these are areas that I expect will probably uh, mature and grow and change as, as we move forward, as we know more and learn more. But I, I just thought I'd show you, give you a little bit of that background and show you that, um, of that thirty-eight million, if you keep that number in your mind, and I'm going to scroll down this list here. This is a list of all of the submissions we've received so far. And the total received is a hundred and fifty-nine million dollars. Now, not all of that is eligible, but that's the total asks that we've received to date. Uh, right now, we believe that of that fifty-five million dollars is eligible. And simple math is that fifty-five million still exceeds the thirty-eight million in award that we received. So we keep that number in mind. Um, this is a list of the requests that the board sees once a week or once every two weeks as part of their consideration of what to actually fund. And, uh, the sum, the board to date so far has funded about almost eighteen million dollars. And that's a combination of actual awards and also placeholder dollars that they've set aside for a small business, childcare and so on. And I highlighted, just thinking ahead, I highlighted some of these areas that I think this committee might be interested in based on the topics. It was transitional housing and homelessness, projects in homelessness and affordable housing. And another way to look at that sort of quickly, these are the, the priorities, the groupings on the left-hand side, and these are the funds that the the board has committed to date so far. Any questions on that?
I don't see any.
No hands? Okay. Try to stop sharing. There we go. Oh, there's a hand.
Uh, Counselor Brodmann, I see some, if you, again, if you can use, yeah, your virtual hands, that would be really useful. Counselor Brodmann.
Thanks. So on that slide, that, that's seven hundred and fifty thousand that's allocated for the managed camp is in response to our proposal for the one point five million dollars that the city would put up for the managed camp. Am I reading that right?
That's right. Do you see that? Yep. That's right. Do you see that right there?
I don't now, but I saw it a second ago.
Oh, hang on a second.
Thank you.
I can share it real quick as well. Uh, maybe I can't.
It's fine. The number, I saw the number and I was aware of it. It's just good to see it.
Yeah.
More firmly.
I did see one other hand, I thought. And then I don't see any additional questions right now for you.
Can I ask one more question, Mayor?
Yes. And then let's move on to. Go ahead.
Okay. Just on that same topic for Commissioner Chang, Commissioner DeBonne and Commissioner Adair. The amount there is allocated for, we'll call it the first tranche of ARPA dollars with the possibility of another allocation to match the full one point five. Am I understanding that correctly?
Who's the best person to answer that question?
Uh, that might be me. I'm going to pop the screen back up there again. Okay. Can you ask the question again? Are you referring to the managed camp line here? It's one point five million?
Yeah. Well, I see seven fifty.
So the original ask was one point five and the commissioners approved half of that. So there's seven fifty that's still requested and seven fifty that's been approved.
Okay. I guess this is for the commissioners then. Is there, are you planning on taking that up when you get your second amount in May and considering matching the full amount that we've proposed and put up as a sort of a matching proposal to you or, or not? Is that a possibility?
So this is Commissioner DeBonne. Yeah, it's a possibility for sure. Uh, so, you know, at this point, uh, in fact, you know, I mean, I think the next few items, we're going to talk about, you know, what, what are we investing in? What, how's the money going to be spent? What's a budget look like? So yeah, let's just start laying it out. You know, I mean, you, we're asked, there's an amount being asked for, half of it was funded. But how is it going to be expended? That's the, the rest of the equation.
And this might be a good segue to introduce, uh, to reintroduce Carolyn to talk more specifically about uh, managed camps. We, we kind of walked a little, a bit through this with the council last night and with the community on kind of where we are in the process. Um, how we are relying on the stakeholders and the emergency homelessness task, task force that Brittany referred to earlier and putting a proposal together. So I'll turn it over to Carolyn.
So we, um, thank you again. Um, so one of the things that our council really did is they said, we, we need to get some safe places for people to lay their heads, um, before the winter comes. And so that's why you see um, the managed camps under expedite. Um, you know, and, and Commissioner Adair even mentioned her opinion on um, the first site that we have identified. Um, and I could talk a little bit about how we, what we did to identify those locations. So you got a letter from us, ODOT got a letter from us, the parks got a letter from the council, um, asking for properties. What we wanted to do was first start with publicly owned properties that we could control, um, uh, to be able to think about what might be, um, a, a really, you know, quick scenario where we can provide safe places for people to stay. Um, and so managed camps is, is one, um, way that we do that. Um, if someone has a pocketful of pallet structures and they're ready to come put them on a site, we would be also happy to accommodate that, that sort of structure. But, um, at this point, we were looking for land. We looked at land across the city of Bend. We were looking for, um, geographic, um, representation. Ideally, we'd have one in each quadrant. Um, but as we started looking at sites, we found really two that were the quickest to bring, um, to the table. The first is Ninth Street. Um, and then the other is off Third Street. Um, we decided just, uh, two minutes, a meeting ago, um, to go ahead and pursue Ninth Street. And, um, we are starting to have a caution with the community about that. Our plans really were, um, to look for properties that could meet some of the essential elements that we heard, both from members of the emergency homelessness task force and from those who are out in the community doing this work. Um, and we really, um, had to see if we could have sites that were about an acre and a half. We really wanted to make sure we would have appropriate access. We thought the budget, an annual budget from the city side to operate the camp, um, sanitation, hand washing, paying for, um, a nonprofit to have a person whose, whose job it is to manage that site, um, trash collection, all those types of things would cost between three fifty, three hundred, four hundred thousand um, dollars a year. And we are going, since we're going to site under House Bill two thousand and six, um, we really had to show that these locations would be proximate to transit services and then other things that families, households who were staying at these locations would need to be able to, um, use this as a stopping point or a, a stepping stone along their journey to more permanent housing. Um, and also to meet that, we wanted to make sure these were locations that, um, could serve the need in the very short term, so twelve to twenty-four months. So we were looking at undeveloped sites. Um, but we also wanted to make sure that they could be sites that we could transition, um, and put in that queue for the city's affordable housing advisory committee to be able to eventually put out for affordable housing. So we were looking at sites, um, that had already had street access, already had water access and could be addressed. Um, and you all know probably better than I, um, as the community's behavioral health um, provider, um, that importance of having an address, um, for people who are trying to get back on their feet. And so this is the location, um, that we are moving forward with at this point. Um, this, um, property to the north is Ben Presbyterian Church. We have a handful.
Carolyn, the, the slide isn't moving. It's.
Oh, shoot. And you're on my screen, but I'm on the wrong screen. Um, so you, you know this site. There's some businesses to the south on Bridgeford, and then we have some houses here, um, to the east. Um, so we really were saying that it would be a portion of this land closest to Ninth Street. Um, that would be the site for the potential managed camp. And so we're talking about temporary, um, we talked about these estimated costs and I just changed them from one side, but prices went up um, from one slide to the next. So, um, but we are having conversations with the neighbors. Um, we know we have to have a series of open public meetings. We know that we need an alignment for the Koina Trail. Um, we heard last night. Um, there is a gas line underneath this property. Um, I'm going to double check and make sure it was located in a way that there would be no explosions. Um, so we're trying to make sure, um, that we really can get this site ready. What we had imagined going in is there would be some perimeter fencing. Um, and that the camp would be just on the city owned property. So it would not be on the Glenwood in Alden Wright's way, which would be the buffer between, um, the location for this um, safe place and, um, the businesses and houses that are bordering, um, the site, but really not abutting the city property, rather, abutting those, um, undeveloped Wright's way. And so we're looking, um, for overall agreement really on what the future, um, should be for this site. So the short term for potentially the safe place and, and the managed camp, as we've talked about it. Um, but really hoping in that twelve to twenty-four month time period, we would have all the underlying work done. So we would be able to begin building structured housing on this location. So we, we would like to be looking at other locations. Um, Juniper Ridge is definitely on the table. We're getting through the construction, um, at Juniper Ridge, um, for the North Interceptor. And then some of the locations up there will be better. Um, we are working through a process with ODOT to figure out how to get site control um, of the site off Third Street so that we can replicate, um, or improve whatever happens here that works so we can replicate it. Um, but, you know, we did a bunch of due diligence with Turnkey. So I've got four hotels that I would also love to buy. Um, and if we could bring those online, um, more quickly, then we would also, we may not need um, to do this sort of safe, this safe camping location if we can find other locations for, um, people to have a safe place to stay and, and start to rebuild their lives. So we had imagined, and I think the council continues to imagine, a handful of these locations, um, throughout the city of Bend so that we can, um, really begin to meet, better meet the needs, um, of those. We heard some stories last night about people who had, um, gotten themselves out of homelessness and having safe places to transition while you're experiencing homelessness. Eventually find more permanent housing is, is, continues to be, um, a major, major element of the path, um, to getting everybody with a safe, uh, roof over their head. So I'm, I'm happy to take any questions. I'll stop sharing so we can have a conversation.
And I will just mention, I think that we're challenged as a city. Um, we, we don't operate a parks recreation um, function. So we have limit, we, we still have a, a lot of land inside our city limits. Of course, Juniper Ridge on the north end of town. Um, but a lot of the land that we have had has already been surplus for affordable housing. So that's why we've really requested help from our partners and you know, also pleaded the private sector too for options available. Um, this is a, this is a solution set that all of our peer sized cities in Oregon, Medford, uh, Salem, Eugene, um, Hillsboro down the line have, have all, uh, deployed. Um, so we're, we're kind of catching up a bit in terms of creating one piece of the puzzle of, of housing options.
Um, I just want to, I see that Gary Farnsworth from ODOT is in an attendee and he has his hands up. I'm not sure. Um, as a property owner who's been involved in this discussion, I don't know if we want to bring him across. And I see Counselor Goodman Campbell, Counselor Perkins and Lynn McConnell. I think you just took your hand down.
Just the tie off of, um, Eric's last point is that this is a, oh, sorry, Gary.
Oh.
Just that this is a solution that our community isn't, um, isn't really familiar with unless people have had the opportunity to visit, um, a managed camp or village or whatever you, um, we might want to call this. Um, i- i- in, in another community. And so it's something that I think we're all really eager to, to get going in a number of different locations. So, um, I think there was a lot of, uh, obviously a lot of, um, comments. was a lot of, obviously, a lot of comment about this at our council meeting last night, but just want to reemphasize for folks that this is the beginning of the conversation. And so, while we're starting by talking about the site on Ninth Street, it's definitely council's intention, kind of being in the lead on this, to, to identify other sites. And certainly, as I mentioned before, sites that are owned by the county, but also by, you know, sites that are owned and managed by Bend Park and Recreation District or other local entities. We would certainly love to have those on the table. So, we've invited, you know, other public bodies to join us in this conversation, but I do feel like there's a need to get something started so that people can look to, or at least a better plan outlined, which is what we're working on, of course, with Ninth Street to, so that people have something they can look at and see what this, what this will actually be.
Thank you, Counselor Goodman Campbell. I'm just going to take a moment to insert in this conversation too, is that I think this has been said a lot during this meeting by a lot of different people in different ways, but the, the large group that we're talking about, just like any group within our community, there are a lot of differences and different needs. And so, there will be a variety of housing situations that we are looking at. And as we begin to identify different parcels that we actually can move forward on that are available in our community, we'll also look at where that is and look at what's appropriate for that particular place. So, last night, we heard a lot about the two schools and the safety issues that our neighborhood, that that particular neighborhood has for especially their children. So, that will be something that we take into account and to heart as we move through this conversation. There will be other places where we identify a different type of a managed situation with service providers, with managers, and the rules may look very different. So, I want that to be really clear. So, it may be safe RV parking, it may be managed camp sites, maybe group shelters, high barrier shelters, low barrier shelters. Right? We are looking at a continuum of options, and we need different sites across our entire community, in different parts of our community to handle this. And I think what we will notice, I mean, we are building a whole lot of affordable housing. We have Wish Camper down in southeast Bend, and there are 200 units in that affordable housing project. So, as we begin to bring people and stabilize on houselessness, we also have an opportunity then to begin moving those people into affordable housing. And I think it's really important for us to understand that what we're looking for right now, as much as anything, is the systems to begin to create the bridges. And we will actually see a change within our community. I think we feel a lot of pressure and need to move forward quickly because that population, because of COVID, and because of the economic strain on some parts of our community, our homeless, houseless population has just accelerated more quickly than we've ever seen. So, that's the urgency to move quickly, and we really do need your partnership, and we need the public to also understand the importance of, instead of listening to what your next door neighbor is saying, you know, really, let's all listen and work together to create these solution sets. I really want to point back to the homeless task force. They're really leaders from different parts of our community who are putting those solutions together because we need it to work. We need to, he'll just sort of say, you know, what will work, not just no. So, I wanted to say all that. Gary Farnsworth, I've lost track of you on the screen.
There, he was just available for questions if, if, if you had any-
Oh. Okay. Thank you. So, I see Counselor Perkins is being patient. Thank you for that for a moment. Why don't we, so Gary, can you hang tight for a moment? And is that all right? Okay. Thank you.
No worries. I'm just here for you.
Thank you. Counselor Perkins, would you like to speak? Are you frozen?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, I mean, to kind of to kind of jump off of what you said, Mayor, just as, you know, we need to fit, you know, the, the type of shelter into the geography of the land, we also need to understand that we need to develop many different types of, of shelters for the people that are, that are currently unhoused. One size does not fit all. And for instance, you know, I remember speaking with a gentleman on Emerson, and I asked him if he had utilized the, the low barrier shelter that was just a block away at Shepherd's, Shepherd's House Shelter. And he said, "I tried. I tried to go there, but I have really, really bad PTSD, and they close the doors at night, and I couldn't do it. I couldn't do it because I need to be able to be outside during the night." So, I think we just need to be aware that that's what we're trying to do, is trying to find a lot of different solutions here for people that have different needs, just like we all have different needs. And secondly, I want to just really quickly amplify something that Carolyn said. She said it really quickly, but I think it's really important. One of the things we've seen be really successful in communities all over the country are buying these hotels and converting them into, into temporary shelters. And one of the reasons why it's so successful is it's so easy. I mean, yes, you need to renovate the hotels, you make them ADA accessible, that kind of thing, but they're set up to be a really good landing place and a place, you know, temporary, but not just, you know, day-to-day, a place where families can be, just like we're doing with Project Turnkey money. So, because the city has done so much work on a lot of these properties and really done a lot of, you know, due diligence, you know, I would really hope that that's something that we could also pursue together as a, as a city and as a county.
Thank you. Commissioner DeBonne, I just want to say for not, everyone can read or see the chat. There's been a lot of chat in the chat about the KOI site, and I've been told that is under contract. It's a private parcel of land owned by a corporate entity. So, I, no, I've read so much of it, so many people, not only in this chat today, but in the emails, so I thought I would just address that publicly in this moment. Commissioner-
A couple thoughts. We got to remember that this is the city of Bend, and about a dozen years ago, the city of Bend wanted to kind of spread its wings with the UGB, urban growth expansion. State of Oregon said, "Whoa, hold on, hold on. We got to analyze this and remanded it back." Sally and I were on the committee that did this for many years. Eric was there. And it took 10 years, a lot of deep analysis, to come up with the urban growth expansion of the city of Bend. Cost millions of dollars. So, one of, there's one aspect to this is we are, we are definitely in a managed growth state, you know, statewide land use. On the other hand, this is a byproduct. City of Bend knew it needed to grow 10, 12 years ago, and it needed to grow kind of big, and it was slowed way down. So, you know, it's just a byproduct of the state we live in. And I'm not saying go sprawl all over the place, but the, the UGB asked probably back from a dozen years ago, timing-wise, should have done, been done quicker. So, at that point though, Tom Anderson might have a note or two about parcels and what we've talked about for what are the opportunities outside the city.
Yeah, just real quick, I know we're pressed on time, but just, I know Counselor Goodman Campbell brought up county-owned properties. So, so, House Bill 2006 that allows the, kind of the fast-track land use doesn't apply outside UGBs. It only applies on rural residential. And so, that all the county-owned land outside the UGB is on resource land. So, that precludes us from making it available for camps. So, looking inside the UGB, the county does have, well, a handful of vacant parcels, two, one of which we've already made available to Vets Village. And the other ones, there's a list of those that we did share with the city. So, city staff has seen them. The two most likely are ones that Christie and Lynn spoke to earlier that have been, you know, committed to affordable or indoor workforce housing projects. So, beyond that, there's, there really is no county-owned vacant land within the UGB that we could make available. There's a, there's a very small parcel that Commissioner Chang, I think, put in chat a little while ago that happens to be adjacent to a north unit irrigation on land that we can, you know, chase that one down and see if that has possibilities. And certainly, I don't want to speak for the commissioners, but we certainly would make that one available if it turns out that it has, has some legs. But in terms of, you know, other county-owned possibilities within the UGB, I think we've pretty much tapped those possibilities out. So, thanks.
Thank you. Counselor Campbell? Can you hear me?
Um, I'm-
Counselor Campbell, go ahead.
Thank you. It may be because of us, because we are the city, Bend City Council, but it's, I, I, I guess I wonder if the county is looking more expansively, not just within our UGB or right on the outskirts of our city. Managed camp anywhere in the county would help with the crisis that we're all undertaking right now. Thank you.
I'd say there's discussions for Redmond and Lacline on this topic also. Yeah, so we're talking about-
So, I think the sort of high level that we want to move into, and I see several hands up, is, you know, each of a, you know, the county and the city have been partnering together on a range of solutions and for our homeless, houseless populations, you know. And so, there's some questions I think that we want to move into, just sort of general agreement. So, I'm going to go, so I think I'm going to go to Counselor Goodman Campbell and Counselor Keebler. And then, I know we have about 20 minutes worth of some transportation issues as well. So, and a health update. So, Counselor Goodman Campbell, can you begin to sort of ask some questions? And maybe you can have a dialogue back and forth between the county commissioners and the counselors.
Sure. This is later on our agenda, I think, but I might just go for it since we're kind of stretched for time here. And I want to make sure I get this question in and kind of open up a dialogue around this. As we're talking about properties that are inside or outside of the urban growth boundary, I also wanted to bring up Juniper Ridge and the thousand acres that the city owns in the county. And I'm curious if the county might be able to look at rezoning that for us to something besides EFU, so that it's something that we could more easily bring into the city for this purpose, the purposes we've been talking about.
Uh, so it is, so there is a function of land use there, right? So, when, this is exactly what I referred to when the city of Bend wanted to expand. There's this no-touch zones, which is the EFU, farmland made for growing food. It's artificial in this huge county because it's a function of water. So, we should, I support taking a look at the big picture. It's already publicly owned. There's a need for it, but it is zone EFU. We've got, you know, land advocacy organizations. And I know, you know, that's how Gina, you and I first met. You were advocating for what? The, up by Crooked River Ranch. But we have land advocacy organizations that know that they can stop hard resource land rezonings if they want. So, we've got to work with people to, to make that justification.
Yes, definitely. And I think, you know, I would be, as well as other counselors, would be happy to, to kind of take the lead on, on working with land use advocates and other groups who would be interested in, in this and making sure that, that we can get on the same page as other folks. But I'm not sure if Nick or others have any perspective on, on how easy that would be to accomplish.
I'm happy to just briefly mention, it's, it's first of all, never easy. It's always a major application and process with a lot of input. And it really begins with soils. We have not yet evaluated the soils. If the soils fall by as farmland, it, the burden goes beyond reachable. It's, it's not, not likely going to happen. If the soils are predominantly class seven or eight, and we know it hasn't been farmed and there are not water rights, then we may have a legitimate path forward, certainly a significant undertaking if that's something that the board and council agree on.
Good. Let's keep that on the table. Counselor Keebler?
Yeah, thanks. I mean, Jenna talked about what I wanted to talk about as well was if the county would commit to just having staff and our staff start looking at the feasibility of that, because I think that area is ripe for something like an RV park or some kind of RV park slash campground or something like that that could be a little more permanent, but on that spectrum of housing. So, I would ask the county commissioners if you're willing to commit to start looking at it. And maybe, as Nick says, it's not going to be feasible. Why don't we take a look and see if it is? Because I think that would be a really good partnership.
Yes. I'm seeing a thumb up, thumbs up. Generally, thank you. Commissioner Chang?
I, I just wanted to mention on the, on the topic of RV parks that earlier this year, we asked, the Board of Commissioners asked staff to lay out for us what the opportunities are for new and expansions of campgrounds, RV parks, and mobile home parks. And they did, the staff put together a really helpful analysis for us on kind of the pathways to doing, you know, new development or expansions of such land uses, and also an inventory of what already exists. And literally just during our Board of Commissioners meeting yesterday, the idea came up that we have a significant number of, you know, it's, and maybe it's not as many as we'd like, but we do have a significant number of RV parks in the county, some of which are not, you know, not occupied to capacity on a regular basis, and some which are zoned, you know, Tom mentioned just now how HB 2006, the emergency citing, you know, legislative opportunity only applies outside of UGBs on rural residential zoned lands. But some of the RV parks, the existing RV parks in the county are actually in RR10 or rural residential zoned areas. So, if there is, if there is kind of, you know, extra capacity in some of those existing privately operated RV parks, and they would be eligible for emergency sighting, it, it sort of creates, it presents an opportunity for some entity to explore with those, those businesses, whether they'd be interested in, in some kind of a partnership to accommodate, you know, you know, essentially like group safe camping in, in, in various parts of the county. So, I just wanted to flag that for people. These, these, the ones that are rural residential zoned may or may not be close to the city of Bend. We had a discussion about, you know, how actively we should, you know, we should go out and, you know, court these kinds of partnerships with, with some of these businesses. And there, we sort of reached a point where, you know, the thought was that the county, county staff capacity to, to, you know, foster those kinds of partnerships is pretty limited. But, you know, I wanted to share it with all of you just because we were just talking about, you know, RV parks.
Thank you. So, we started off this meeting talking about a lot of projects that we have, county and the city have partnered with and, and really brought forward for our community. I think the most important sort of ask from me as a mayor representing our city council to you, the county commissioners, is, you know, just to, everything I'm hearing today reiterates all of that in different ways, but altogether, you are committed to continuing to partner forward in, on this topic and in this arena. We've heard a lot of issues. I think we, or a lot of opportunities. And I think the question is to, you know, are we- are we good to keep moving forward with managed camp options and funding, you know, and just, I think I've heard a lot of that reiterated today from each and all of you, still looking at possibilities. And again, I guess my conclusion is different. I'm Chair DeBonne, I'll ask you to weigh in too, and other county commissioners if you want to, but we all need, so we'll continue, I think, to work, certainly to work forward on the Juniper Ridge idea and through those issues. I hear interest from a majority of commissioners there. In general, help us find sites for homelessness, begin to move forward to find and locate the site and the funding for navigation center. So, you know, I just, again, want to reiterate and sort of ask once more, are we in this, you know, and just confirm we're in this together. And I know we'll have some hard conversations in the future. This is just the beginning of putting it out there. Commissioner DeBonne, is there anything you want to add to that?
Just, yeah, let's make sure, I mean, we've got to keep communicating. We are the elected officials. We're, right now, we're representing. One of my thoughts is let's make sure we invite as many people as we can to the economy, you know, a vibrant job, opportunity for income, be able to invest in housing and transportation as an individual. You know, that's, that's, I think, where we want to see this. There's definitely addiction issues and mental health issues that are on the streets. We want to help wrap around services as much as we can there. Transitional housing is a Veterans Village. What a great example. People are going to be able to go there, see it, understand what we're talking about. And just like you mentioned, the new apartments coming online, the new housing options, you know, this may be a point in time, hopefully it'll, we can't let it get worse. We've got to bring it back and make it get better. It is COVID right now too, so we have to remember that. There's layers of stressors in our world right now. But this is the culture of central Oregon we're talking about, this beautiful city called Bend that so many people have wanted to be in. And, you know, when we talk about this topic, and how can we just bring it in, keep it, you know, welcoming and, you know, happy and, you know, growing healthy? That's my thoughts.
Thank you. All right. Carolyn Egan, I saw your hand up. I see your hand down now. So I think with that, let's move into the last part of our topic, our agenda. I'll start with Gary Farnsworth. We have some transportation updates and information. Thank you for hanging out through this meeting.
Oh, no problem. I appreciated listening in on the last part of the conversation. And Carolyn did mention that we do have some property and one in particular that we've been looking at. So I'm happy to, always happy to dive into that topic as well. We're very interested, ODOT, in trying to help address the issue, and certainly we've, we've had been, had to deal with the impacts of that. So thank you. Yeah, well, thanks for the time, everyone. Again, Gary Farnsworth, I'm the region manager here, Region Four in Bend, and know many of you, but several still first time, and nice to meet you all, at least in this format. So again, appreciate it. And then there are some of you that I've worked closely with over the years, and including Eric, of course, on, specifically on transportation, and my, my view of what's been happening over the last couple of years with the, what I thought was a fabulous process for the Bend TSP update, and companion to that was the Bend MPO plan, and a lot of other work that we've done very collaboratively in the planning world. There's so much happening across these three entities, ODOT, city and county, when it comes to transportation and transportation planning, and so much so that I've gotten to a point where I want to see us move into the implementation phase in a similar collaborative method. So I've asked some of you to gather and talk some about that, and I believe it was Commissioner DeBonne who had said, hey, we're going to have this joint meeting. So, so here I am to, to just kind of frame up the concepts a little bit. So what I wanted to do, and just in terms of thinking about this from a bit of a goal perspective, and I'll just refer to some notes here, is we've got a great opportunity to maximize on all the current planning, the funding, the partnership opportunities to advance a very complete and robust multimodal transportation system for the Bend area. I know that sounds maybe like the TSP, TSP statement, but really it's talking about how can we collectively leverage and pool resources and crossing over on the plans that I'm thinking of. And I'll just list those plans. Of course, I just mentioned the TSP and the MPO, MTP, the Cascades East Transit Master Plan, that's now completed, and then the US 97 Parkway Facility Plan that is now adopted by the city, and we'll take that to the Transportation Commission here in November for, for the Oregon Transportation Commission. Also, we are finishing up on an intelligent transportation system plan for the Bend area. And when I think of that, I also think of the bond measure where cities, you all set aside some funding for, for intelligent transportation systems. Also, the county launching into an update to the transportation system plan. Also, we're supporting ODOT, the mobility hubs planning work for the Bend area that's coming off of the transportation system plan. Bend interested in moving forward with the transportation equity program and how that can fit in with transportation, and several other refinement planning and interchange area type things that we're doing, ODOT, for the area. Things that are coming at us as well, of course, from a funding perspective, is the, the bond package for the city, state transportation funds for public transportation. Also, we are in the process of updating our capital program. We call the statewide transportation improvement program for, starting in 2420, 2024, and it has a very expanded version of active and public transportation in terms of funding for, for those, those types of modes. Also, we're very hopeful about federal infrastructure bill passing here through the House on this fall. And then also, there's a lot of talk about additional funding packages for the state in the coming sessions. So just a lot going on, a lot of opportunities for, I think, coalescing. We can certainly take advantage of the MPO. But among these two boards here today, and the, the MPO Policy Board, which some of you are represented on, of course, we have COIC, we have the Transportation Bond Oversight Committee, Parks and Rec, School District, OSU Cascades, the Forest Service, healthcare industry, emergency services, neighbor impact, chamber, freight carriers, a whole host of folks that I think would want to get involved in how we can start coalescing our investments. So billing off of investments we're looking at now are ones we'd like to advance. And if so, I want to continue to provide a hub for how we can move those things forward and do them in a collaborative fashion. The other way to think about, the way I'm thinking about a lot of this is using the smart city framework, which is really about using the information and technologies aspect to, to support how we operate our systems. So I'm going to stop there and see if there's any other follow-up from perhaps Eric or others that I've been engaging with on this topic, or take any questions.
Thank you, Gary. Any questions of Gary at this time? And I'm certainly looking forward to the Transportation Safety Summit on the 30th. That will be great. Um, I'm assuming that was Gary, but that might be somebody else because I see Chris Dodi popped in.
Good afternoon, Mayor. Hello, Board and Council. Yes, I believe the city council actually just heard this, this presentation last night from the Bend MPO, if I'm not mistaken. Our board heard it last week. So this is maybe just a reminder bullet to make some time for us on September 30th for the Central Oregon Safe Travel Summit. This is on the heels of our Transportation Safety Action Plans that the Bend MPO and city did, as well as the county, and part of which is, you know, how do we change safety culture and start talking about that in our transportation system, not just how to fix intersections, but how to fix the culture and get messaging out there in an effective way. So on the 30th, we want to get together and talk about what we can do about this sort of thing, based on, you know, some unfortunate safety data that's, that we've observed. So, quick reminder to do that again. Thank you.
And will there be ways for the public to weigh in with their ideas?
Yes, absolutely. I, I think it's a come-one, come-all type event, but this is just the kickstart of something that, that, you know, will certainly, hopefully be out in the public for conversation and great ideas as well.
Right. Thank you. Then we were looking, go ahead.
Let me just acknowledge, I mean, this is just another moment for us to all jointly acknowledge, there's, there's just a lot of crazy traffic accidents out there right now, and it's dangerous. There was a terrible highway accident, I don't even know the specifics this morning, which just shut down the whole highway. There's intersections all over central Oregon with plastic and glass in them from just fender benders. It is, it's not a good time. People, so that, that's, I mean, I advocate that, let's all think about this. And I heard you on the radio this morning, Ms. Mayor, so slow down, drive sober, buckle up, and pay attention. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Exactly. That's it. Yeah, our, our accidents in the past year took, and our deaths took a huge increase. And so there's really concern across our entire community to really change, change our trajectory and have a safer community for everyone. Thank you. Stabilization Center, Holly?
Hi, everyone. Good afternoon, Mayor, councilors, commissioners. Thank you so much for having me. I'm here today to just give a very quick, high-level kind of overview of what the data has shown us so far from our first, about a little over a year of being open. I'm in the middle of a pandemic. So I want to just kind of cover that, and then I want to touch on some successes and some challenges, and then pass it over to Commissioner Chang to follow up from my presentation. So year-to-date, since opening June 1st of 2020, we've had over almost 4,000 visits to the stabilization center during that time. And about, about 2,000 of those have either walked in or been brought in by law enforcement. So we're averaging about nine and a half visits per day, which is actually really close to what we had hoped to see in the first year. About 20% of the people we serve are brought into us by law enforcement, and the vast majority of those are from the city of Bend Police Department, but we do serve the city of Redmond quite, quite well as well. About 20% of the people we serve utilize our 23-hour observation unit. So what that tells us is that really a vast majority of people that come here can be seen a clinician, maybe get some peer support, case management, appointments, and some follow-up care, and they can move on to the next level of care that they need. And about 20% need to stay with us a little while longer and get kind of that extra level of care that we provide here. We are averaging about, about 20 to 30% of the people we see are diverted from the emergency department. I think that's a low estimate. It's a difficult number to track because we have to ask people where they would have gone, and many of them say they have no idea where they would have gone. So we estimate there's a portion of those people would have ended up in the emergency department as well. Sadly, we have had 3% of the people we've served tell us that they would have ended their life if we'd not been here. So I think that's a very important number to pay attention to. We know we are saving lives here. People are telling us that's what we're doing, and so I think that just demonstrates the critical nature of this resource for our community. About 62% of the people we serve are from the city of Bend or city of Bend residents. And I think an important statistic to note also is that we do definitely serve people, individuals experiencing homelessness, but 75% of the people we serve are housed. So the vast majority of the people that we're serving do have homes that they're going to. They're, you know, members of our community, friends, family, kids, all of the people in our community. So this really is a community resource for all levels of our community and to support everyone who's having a mental health crisis. And so some of the successes that we've had, I mean, I think opening in the pandemic and staying open during the pandemic, providing face-to-face services the entire time, which was a very limited service that was available to our community, and we were doing that the entire time, and we did it without getting an outbreak. So I consider that a major, major success. And I'm very proud of our staff for following PPE protocols and keeping our clients and themselves safe. That was huge. We've also gotten really positive feedback from both consumers, as well as our community partners, including our law enforcement partners. We continue to seek that feedback. We want to know how we're doing, and they continue to tell us that it's, it's meeting their needs and that they appreciate that the resource is available to them. And I think the data also just kind of demonstrates the success of our program, just in the volume that we're seeing in, in a very difficult time where people aren't leaving their homes a lot of times, and so we're still seeing a fairly high volume of people at the facility. And then just another little side note, we have been nominated for two awards. One was a Building a Better Central Oregon Award, and another one is a Pacific Northwest Top Projects Award. So I think that just goes to show that people are paying attention to what we're doing here in Deschutes County, and they're acknowledging it, and it's, it's really an honor. So some of the challenges aren't going to be surprising to you. Workforce, biggest challenge so far. About 30% of the crisis program right now is vacant. And despite that, I kind of put this in the successes bucket a little bit, we are still continuing to operate at full capacity. So that has forced us to be really innovative in our recruitment and retention strategies, as well as our staffing models, and just our schedule and all of it. We've had to think so far outside the box, and I think we've risen to the challenge to help keep that going. But it has been by far our biggest challenge this year. And then just also the limited resources that are available to us outside of the stabilization center. Still very limited access to the state hospital because of staffing challenges across the state and the country, limited access to residential facilities that are closing left and right. So that puts us in a situation to manage a much higher acuity population than we were actually set up to do, but we're doing it, and we're managing it, and we're adapting and adjusting to meet the need. And then I, one of our biggest challenges also is that stable and consistent funding. As you know, operating a facility like this with this many staff without knowing from year to year whether the funding will be there or not creates incredible challenges for staff retention, as well as just operations. And so that continues to be something we seek and look to our community partners and, and other grants and other opportunities that we might continue to find stable funding for the stabilization center. So I will open it up to Commissioner Chang and any questions that anyone might have. Thank you.
Thanks so much for that overview, Holly. And what I would say about the stabilization center is that it has been transformative for our community, for behavioral and mental health in our community, for our law enforcement agencies, which, which now have saved countless hours in person time, not sitting with someone who's having a moderate intensity mental health challenge in the emergency department. It's been transformative for our hospital and for our emergency department, which we know is pretty taxed at this moment in time during COVID. So the, this is a facility that's been transformative for our community, and we are looking at a cliff of sorts in about 10 months, less than, less than a year, when we are not sure what kind of, you know, whether we have complete funding to keep the stabilization center operating 24/7 after the end of this current fiscal year. So, you know, July 1st, 2022, we're not sure whether we have the funding all lined up before the stabilization center to continue to operate 24/7 after that point. So we are, we are looking to a number of potential partners for a long-term commitment to help us fund this facility. And the city of Bend being a substantial beneficiary of the, of the stabilization center is, you know, you guys are top on our list in terms of people we, we would like to see partner with us in this way on a long-term basis to keep the stabilization center operating. I, I want to underscore one of the things that Holly mentioned, which is our staffing challenges, and actually connect that back to the predictability of funding. If we are not able to guarantee people that they have a, a regular, you know, regular or permanent position at the stabilization center, when we're trying to court them to come work for us, it makes it a lot harder to find and retain employees. So the, the stability of the funding is not just important for knowing that we'll be able to offer 24/7 service starting next fiscal year, but it's also critically important right now for finding great people to work with. right now for finding great people to work with, you know, our, our, our population that's facing mental health crises and, and for keeping those people. So that, that's, you know, sort of by the, the pitch I'd like to make, I know that we are in the middle of the, the city's budget cycle, that you, you do a two-year, a two-year biennial, or, you know, a two-year budget, and we're, you know, now like 14 months into that. So I, I, I know that that makes it challenging, or sorry, not 14 months into that, but you are, you know, eight months into that, or a couple of months into that. And I know that makes it challenging to consider adding this, adding this to your budget kind of at this moment after you've set your two-year budget already. But, you know, I, I just implore you to, to be creative about, you know, how a, a funding commitment could be made. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Chang. And I am, I'm looking at your letter that came from the all three commissioners and asking the city to make an annual contribution of $400,000. We just received that last week. Thank you. I know this conversation has been going for a while, and we'll certainly look seriously at finding ways to consistently fund this really important service for our region. So thank you. With that, I'm going to move on to, I think, Dr. Conway. We're going to wrap up with COVID these last 10 minutes. Thank you very, very much for all your work and all your reports. I mean, we truly need like a two-day work session to drop into this, but we'd be really tired then. Dr. Conway, thank you.
Yes.
See, I'm not, there we go.
Two slides, I'm pulling them up.
Not, there we go.
All right.
Yes, I can see them well.
Conway, I'm the Health Services Director for the county, and I will do my best to keep this to 10 minutes. This is intended as a brief update with some Bend focus on COVID-19. So as you can see, we continue to have a very, oh, I'm sorry. As you can see, we continue to have a very substantial epidemic curve with continuing increase in cases over 1,000 in the last week. I do want to take pains to point out that Bend is still contributing a disproportionate amount of those cases, over 700 in the last week, so just over half the population, but about over, over 65% of the cases. Overall, we've had very high numbers of tests done, a lot of them for clinical reasons, some for other reasons, and we're running very high test positivity rates, flirting with 14%, which is by far the highest we've seen during the pandemic. The thing that many people are most concerned about is our hospitalization numbers. We've been in the mid 80s for the last few days with typically around a dozen people in the ICU and as many as 10 on ventilators. There were quite a few more than that last weekend, but they were able to discharge some people. So this is a, this is a real concern, both because of the capacity of the hospital, one of the reasons the upper bound on this is 90 is that that's, that's the upper functional bound on the hospital capacity as we have it. So this is, this is a real concern, not only for people with COVID, but for people that have other emergencies and other urgent needs. There's a little bit of good news I have to share. So one thing, the background, as you know, we've been doing wastewater surveillance in Bend for quite some time, back, going on over a year back to last May. This is graphing it since the end of October. We've gotten it down to where we're getting the results within a week, which is timely enough to see, see some actual value from this. So we got these results yesterday, the, from the draw on the sampling on the 24th. You can see that there has been a slight decrement in the, in the numbers. This is actually not, not mirrored in Redmond. We're seeing actually continued increase in Redmond, but we're seeing a slight decrement in Bend. So we may see some flattening in the epidemic curve for the county in the next week or two. So there's quite a bit of news in the recent past. The not very euphonious, but logically organized brand name of Comor Nati, which is the new vaccine from Pfizer Biotech, has been licensed. So persons who have been waiting for a licensed vaccine to become vaccinated, this is your opportunity. Monoclonal antibodies. These are antibodies that are very similar to the ones that your body would make. There's a two-synthetic antibody combination with a brand name of Regeneron, which has been available for quite some time, but only in the last two months has become available by injection into each of the limbs rather than having to be infused by IV. And this is primarily right now targeted for individuals who have mild to moderate illness, so early in the course of illness or just after getting diagnosis and have any of these risk factors, diabetes, overweight, chronic kidney failure disease, elderly or over 55 with certain underlying health conditions, and then 12 years old with other, other things like immunosuppressive disease, certainly organ transplant, et cetera, would, would be appropriate as well as a risk factor. There is one thing that we're very concerned about. There's a veterinary warming agent called Libromectin, which has been in common use for many years, but for reasons that sort of defy understanding, this is taken on as sort of a fad treatment, ostensible substitute for either antibodies or vaccination for COVID. There's no medical evidence that this works, and we've had a, a real sharp uptick in the number of people that are presenting at poison control centers with overdoses of this medicine. So this is not the right thing to use if you have COVID. We are on the verge of having booster or third dose administration of vaccine. It's still waiting approval by the technical bodies, the ASAP and the FDA technical bodies, but it appears that that's likely, and that has to do with diminishing antibody response over time, particularly for the elderly and people with underlying health conditions. At the current time, we are already giving an additional dose, we're not calling it booster because it's an additional dose for cause, to people that are severely immunocompromised. So people are, have had chemotherapy or have some inborn error in immune incompetence or other, other things that may contribute to that. So you may find your clinician suggesting that, that you get that. Pregnant women, the jury's no longer out on this, that the pregnant women, and this is authorized within the, the new vaccine as well, the fully licensed vaccine, and it is appropriate for people who are pregnant or breastfeeding or trying to become pregnant now. We're doing our best to continue to remove barriers to vaccination, including costs. There's no cost for vaccine or administration, the vaccine at the pop-ups that we, we organize. You can check with your provider if you want to get it elsewhere or pharmacy. We're doing our best to really reduce waiting time and, and education, providing education. These are the vaccine events that, which we're involved in during September. There's a clinic in Sisters, 2:00 to 4:00 p.m. on Mondays in Bend, and this, this is for meeting jointly with Ben, Tuesdays from 5:00 to 7:00, the Wall Street Services Building. And then Wednesdays from 1:00 to 3:00 at the Bend Library downtown, conveniently across the street from City Hall. Redmond, Thursdays from 9:30, 11:30 at Redmond City Hall, and then Lapine, 1:00 to 3:00 in the library on Tuesdays. And we're eager to help with questions. This is our vaccine hotline, but you can call with other questions about COVID, and then you can also get email assistance or look at our website. And just the final closing observations, we do have three recently implemented administrative rules. For one is for requiring masks to be worn in indoor and then crowded outdoor spaces such as events or concerts. And then vaccination requirements being imposed for healthcare workers and healthcare staff, and some additional vaccination requirements for schools and school-based programs. And with that, cool, and thanks very much. Please wear your mask and get your vaccine. Yeah. See if I can figure out how to unshare.
Thank you, Dr. Conway. Thank you for your continued work to follow this ever-changing pandemic that's hitting our community really hard right now, and especially our healthcare system and our healthcare providers. So with that, Commissioner DeBonne.
I'll just open it up, see whether anybody else have a comment or anything. I think it's time to wind it down.
Do we want to go around the table or just quickly with comments? I'm seeing head shakes, no. So, so I think what I, I think what I'll do is, is end by saying this. There's a lot of conversation yet to be had, and I think we left a lot of questions that I know some, some of you had that were unanswered. I know there, so I, I guess I personally see, would recognize, and I'll check in with council, but I certainly would personally, there's so much to be covered that we need to move forward on now, and the closer we can work together, the better it is. Whether or not we want to focus on the task forces to do that work, or whether or not we find meeting together as a whole, all seven of us and all three of you, if that's a better way to move some of these tricky conversations, I'm very open to that as well. So I'll look to, to you, Chair DeBonne, and your guidance on that. Certainly have, I mean, certainly the one thing that going through this agenda today highlights is that there's a lot going on and there's huge work to be done. And identifying resources and paths forward now is, is critically important for our community and certainly our county.
So I think right before we got started, there were some conversations about people getting together and comparing notes about life or whatever. I'm available for that, too, for a few of the councilors. Now, let's, let's, you know, let's talk outside of these sessions just so we understand who each other is a little bit better and, you know, what, what we can do to, to be positive and move forward. So Commissioner Chang had his hand up, too.
Agreed, yes.
Yeah, I, I, just to echo some of the things that you said, Sally, there are huge challenges facing our community that our community needs the city and the county to work on together. And so the encouragement for us to all lean in and, and do that work is, is welcome, and I, I would, I would echo it. And I would specifically ask that we not wait too, you know, Commissioner Derr just said this in the chat, not, not wait too long until we do this again. There, there's tremendous value in having the elected bodies for both jurisdictions meet together on a regular basis. And I guess the other thing, you know, just, just to say, to, to end on a, you know, optimistic note, the, some of the crises and challenges that we discussed today, they, they did not develop overnight. They're, they're huge projects, and we will not solve them overnight, but I am really heartened to see all of the good work that's happening in, in our community to tackle these big challenges. And we won't solve these problems overnight, but we can make some, we can make a dent every year, and we can get to a better place by diligent, long-term work. So thanks, everyone.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else feel like they really want to have a closing comment?
Meeting adjourned.
Meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone, and huge thanks to staff and councilors and commissioners and everyone who worked on all the information that we shared with each other today. That was a lot of effort and work, and it's so great for the community to understand and see it in one place as well as for us. So thank you again. Take care, have a good weekend.